We'd like to welcome everyone to the October 14th, 2020 meeting of the Hilton Head Island Planning Commission, and we want to welcome all the members of the public who may be listening on to our broadcast, and we appreciate your participation. We have a very long agenda today. The commission received over ninety-five pages of public comment, and as of this moment, we have seventeen speakers on our agenda to provide us with their input. We may take a break depending on how long we are on the agenda. And first duty is to ask Theresa, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you, Theresa. The second item is we have a new member that we need to have sworn in. Mr. John Campbell is joining the commission, filling out our ranks to nine, and we want to welcome him. And I understand that Councilmember Bill Harkins, Mayor Pro Tem, is going to administer the oath of office to Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have Mr. Harkins on the line at this time. We're gonna see if Mr. Sean Cullen can do the swearing in.
That's fine.
Okay. If you'll just give us a moment to see if Sean's available.
Certainly.
Mr. Chairman, this is Sean Cullen, Community Development Director.
Welcome, Sean.
Sorry about the delay. I'll fill in for Councilman Harkins and Planning Commissioner Campbell. I'll read you, have me repeat the oath of office, and we'll get you sworn in here.
Okay.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
Which I have been appointed.
And that I will.
And I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve.
And preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Thank you, sir. That completes the oath of office.
Welcome, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
All right, Theresa, would you now call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Unmute yourselves, Levon.
Here.
Ms. McGowan? Leslie McGowan?
Leslie, you need to unmute.
We can circle back to Ms. McGowan. I do see she's on the line. Mr. O'Neill?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon? We can go back to Mr. Scanlon. Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Christian?
Here. All right, do we not have Mr. Scanlon on the line, Theresa?
You know, I see he was on here, but he may have dropped off. We can circle back to Ms. McGowan.
Leslie, make sure you're unmuted.
Mr. Christian?
Here.
Okay, we still can't hear you, Leslie. Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Don't know what I did, but I'm here.
Okay, Theresa, could we have someone call Mr. Scanlon to see if he's having some technical difficulties?
Yes, sir, certainly.
All right, thank you. Well, we'll move forward with the approval of the agenda. Do staff have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We would like to flip the order in which the zoning map amendments are presented. These would be items eight, C, and D. Staff believes that should these be approved, the overlay district should be first, followed by the related rezoning.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended by staff or suggested amended by staff?
I'll make that mention.
Okay, Leslie? Steve seconded. Okay, Leslie, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred? Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. All right, we have the minutes of our special meeting on September sixteenth, and then I have a motion to approve those minutes. All right, Stephen moves, they're second.
Second.
All right, who is, who seconded, if you could?
Mark.
All right, thank you, Mark. All right, we have Stephen moves, Mark seconded. Theresa, would you call the roll? If you have any changes, please pipe up when Theresa calls your name.
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neill?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. And we would like to welcome Councilmember Glenn Sanford is also joining the call and will be listening in. First, we have no new business, so our first, excuse me, we have no unfinished business. Our new business is firstly, public hearing on dirt road paving LMO amendments, and this is the town of Hilton Head Island is proposing to amend chapters three and five of the land management ordinance to add the revised following sections. And I am not going to read every single section, and Theresa, if you would incorporate this by reference into the minutes, and I believe Mr. Lewis or Terry Lewis, Mr. Lewis, Ms. Lewis is going to make a presentation.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. This is Terry Lewis. I am going to present to you today the information related to the dirt road paving LMO amendments. These amendments do come forward to you from the LMO committee with a recommendation of approval. They had one suggested change, and I'll touch on that change as I go through the amendments. So the town has had a program in place for a while to accept amendments of public road rights of way on private unpaved roads, and the goal is to provide publicly maintained infrastructure within these rights of way. The town can approve different design standards on these roads, and we have specific criteria, and those are listed in the set of amendments that the town uses to determine whether a road qualifies to be considered for this program. The town, in an effort to explain the impact of the paving on the dirt road, that the paving of the dirt roads would have met with residents that would be affected by these changes, and out of that came concerns that led, that ultimately led to these amendments. There were concerns related to density setbacks and buffers and the size of the right of way. So those are the changes that I'm gonna go through with you today and talk about what we developed to respond to those concerns. So specific changes include adding language to residential districts, specifically the RM four, RM six, which as you, you'll see when we go forward with the other amendments today, that's a district that's proposed to be created, RM eight and RM twelve, and then the mixed use districts of Marshfront, Mitchellville, Neighborhood Commercial, Stony, and Waterfront Mixed Use. This would, the language that we would be adding would state that parcels along a right of way that's acquired as part of the town's dirt road paving program would be allowed to develop to the density potential that existed before the right of way is established. So if you can do three units today, and when you give up a little bit of the land to create the right of way, you can only do two, you would still be permitted to do three. We would add language that the adjacent street setback would be a minimum of five feet along any of the parcels that were abutting a town right of way acquired as part of this dirt road paving program, and that there would be no buffer along these same parcels. We also would add a new section to establish the exceptions that apply to right of way, rights of way that are created as part of this dirt road paving program, and you can see that starting on page thirteen and going to page fourteen of the amendment packet. These are the exceptions. This also sets out the criteria that allows a property, allows a street, I'm sorry, to be part of this program. And then finally, we would allow, we would add language that allows the town engineer to accept a minimum right of way width of thirty feet for two-way traffic and twenty-four feet for one-way traffic for streets acquired under this program where physical and property constraints exist. And this is the change, the addition of the twenty-four foot right of way for one-way traffic is the change that was recommended as part of the LMO committee meeting. So those are, those are the recommended changes that we would take forward to respond to the concerns that residents had related to paving dirt roads.
Thank you, Theresa, for Terry. I'll open the public hearing, but there are no public comments on this item. Is that correct, Theresa?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we will close the public hearing. However, we're going to discuss this among the commissioners, and we'll do it in order. And if you would call the roll, and at that time, if you have a comment or a question of Terry, please convey that information to Terry. So Theresa?
Yes, sir. Leslie, Ms. McGowan?
Yes, as was stated, this item came before the LMO committee a week or so ago, and the change that was, was added was to create an option for a one, a one-way right of way width of twenty-four feet, and that was arrived at through discussion with the engineering department and with also public safety, fire safety. Other than that, anything more to add to Terry's comments?
I have no additional comments or questions.
Mr. Scanlon, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry, my internet crashed this morning, but I'm on by phone here, and I have no further comments at this point.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
No comments.
Mr. Perry?
No comments at this time.
Mr. Alfred?
Clarification, the provision of five-foot setback. The dwelling could be only, that's, this is from roadway.
I'm sorry, Mr. Alfred, we had trouble getting, catching all of that. Could you repeat that?
Yes, sir. Clarification, the five, I can put setback provision. Does that mean that a dwelling could be only, that's, away from roadway?
So, this is Terry Lewis. So we're still having a little bit trouble. I know, I can understand that your question is related to the five-foot setback. So along these, along these roads that are proposed to be paved, there would be a right of way established, thirty feet, a thirty-foot right of way if it was a two-way street, and there would be a five-foot setback along that road, and in that setback, you can have a driveway connection, but you can't have a structure.
Does that mean the dwelling could be, could be, only five feet away from the road?
So the dwelling, any new dwellings would have to be, they would be at least five foot back from the edge of that right of way.
I'm gonna, this is, all right, close.
Well, and if I can just explain, the reason for that is, in most of these areas where we're going to be proposing to pave these dirt roads, there's already development established along those roads, or there's already structures built along those roads, so we were trying to find a right of way width and setbacks, and you know, and keep in mind with the setbacks that we wouldn't be making too many properties nonconformities, because generally, there are already houses along these roads.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
I have no comment at this time.
Mr. Campbell?
I have no comments at this time.
And Mr. Chairman?
Just, just a couple of questions for Terry. On both the thirty-foot right of way for a two-way road and twenty-four-foot right of way for a one-way road, Terry, what would be the amount of asphalt that would go down as far as pavement, or, we're not talking about asphalt here at all, we're talking about leaving them as dirt roads?
Well, no, we would be recommending that they be paved with an improved surface. So in the case of the thirty-foot right of way, that would be twenty feet of pavement, and then it leaves room on either side for the, for the shoulder.
Okay, so we'd have five feet of unpaved surface on either side of the road to allow for utility installation?
That's correct.
Okay, and on a twenty-four-foot right of way, what would be the amount of pavement on a twenty-four-foot right of way for a one-way road?
I believe it's fourteen feet, and then you have to have, you would have a shoulder on either side of that.
And then you would have the, the five feet for utilities on either side and also for stormwater.
That's correct.
Movement. All right, so, and the, the five-foot setback from the road right of way would be from that unpaved area. So you'd have five feet from the asphalt, and then another five feet, so it'd be, be a total of ten feet from the edge of the pavement.
From the edge of the pavement, correct.
Okay. Okay, and is there, at this point, is the ownership of the dirt road, is this owned by the adjacent property owner, and that is why we're, we're doing this, or is it just because the area has already been established and we'd be setting up nonconformities? Or is it a combination of the two?
It is a combination of the two, however, in the majority of the cases, the, the road that's in place right now is an access easement, so it's owned by everybody along that roadway. When the town, if the town would acquire it and establish a right of way, and then it would be owned by, and maintained by the town.
And so the objective would be to have these right of ways turned over to the town?
Yes, that's part of the criteria that is being, that has been set in place to establish this. There does have to be one hundred percent agreement from the property owners along that access easement, and in a couple of cases, there is an established, an established right of way, it just hasn't been paved yet, but in the majority of them, it is an access easement owned by multiple property owners along there, and yes, they would have to agree to it, and then the town would establish the right of way and then become the owner of that right of way.
Okay, and for the, for receiving that benefit to the town, we're, we're providing this, that the zoning for that area or the number of units per acre not be diminished because they're giving up that property for the, for the road right of way to the town to pay, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, that answers my questions. Terry, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, we have an additional round of discussion after hearing all of the comments presented, and we can ask, is there any, I'll just ask among the commissioners, is there anyone else who has a comment before I ask for a motion on this particular item? All right, hearing none, can I ask for a motion to move this item forward?
I'll move to, move the, move it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Yes, Scanlon will second.
All right, thank you, Michael. We have a motion by Alan Perry, a second by Michael Scanlon, and Theresa, would you call the roll, and when you, when Theresa calls your name, if you give your yea or nay?
Mr. Perry?
Yea.
Mr. Stevens?
Approve, yea.
Ms. McGowan?
Yay.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yea.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yea, I have one question. How, I'm on, obviously, I'm on unmute now. How do I mute if, when I want to and need to? It's star four to unmute, but what is it to go back to mute?
Mr. Scanlon, is there a mute button on, on your cell phone?
No, I thought coming in like this by phone, that they said if you want to talk, star four, that's to unmute. How do I go back to mute? I just don't want to be making noises.
Sure. If you have, do you have an iPhone?
Yes.
On the home screen, there is a mute button when you're in the.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Scanlon, if it gets, if there's too much feedback on your end, we'll be able to notice that, and we can mute you on our end.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alfred?
Hi.
Mr. Theodore?
Yea.
Mr. Campbell?
Yea.
Mr. Christian?
Approve, thank you. It's unanimous. All right, thank you, members of the commission, and thank you, Terry, for your presentation. All right, we're now moving on to a public hearing on historic neighborhood preservation overlay, district LMO amendments. We are proposing to amend chapters two, three, four, five, and ten, and appendix D of the land management ordinance, LMO, to add and revise the following sections. And I am not going to read all of the sections, but if Theresa will incorporate those by reference into the minutes of the meetings, and I am going to go a little bit out of order here, and Levon Stevens, it was the, or not was the, is the chair of the Gulligici Task Force, and I'm gonna ask Levon if he would like to make some opening comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we've been working with the Gulligici Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force for the last almost three years now, and we've come to this point, and I just want to make some opening remarks. Of course, we do have a full agenda with a lot of feedback from the community, as well as those of us who've been very much involved, which is staff and the task force. I'm a native of Savannah, Georgia. I grew up making trips to Hilton Head. Many of the affluent American professors and business people own property here in Hilton Head. Some were natives and some relatives of native islanders here. I experienced beautiful beaches and wonderful nature of Hilton Head along, long before there was a town or a development. I've been a permanent resident of this island for almost forty years now. Over the years, I've seen transformation of this piece of God's earth into what is now known as a world-class resort and destination island. I remember when vacationers and people seeking warm clients to retire would mostly consider Florida as their destination. Hilton Head was a somewhat well-kept secret even after the bridge was built. Over time, mankind has discovered Hilton Head, and developers flocked to this five-by-fourteen-mile island. Soon, there was discussion around the new settlers here to incorporate this piece of paradise into a municipality. The word was out that Hilton Head was the place to be, whether you wanted to live here or visit frequently. So now here we are in this present day and time. Many of us have come here with that slam the door shut behind me mentality, and it is, now neighbors are, you know, we're finding it difficult and complaining about new development and potential overdevelopment. Very sensitive to that as well. I recall in past years that someone quoting and saying to residents and native islanders here, if you do not like what's happening, you can just leave. How insulting and selfish is this attitude? Hilton Head Island is indeed a beautiful place to live and visit. It is a chamber of commerce's dream, major sporting events, beautiful golf and tennis, pristine beaches, nature preserves, wonderful cultural scenes with visual art, music, and performing arts, rich historic sites, great restaurants, and a variety of world-class cuisines. So what's missing? A brief history reveals that there was a Hilton Head Island and people here long before there was a town or a resort. The culture that survived here was one of African descent, which has survived slavery, Jim Crook, and present-day racial inequality. The way of life here was simple. A sense of community exists between families and friends. Neighbors cared and looked out for each other. If I had food, my neighbor had food. If someone was in need, needs were addressed with medical attention and so forth. There was not much need for currency as goods could be traded for services. The way of the culture was to have faith in God and respect your fellow man. With the insertion of developers and opportunists and people of all kinds of ethics and moral backgrounds, the once peaceful, pristine, innocent peace of heaven became a hunting ground for retirees, visitors, and people from everywhere. What is missing is the native people who have been here all the time. What's missing is the Gulligici culture that still struggles to survive, thrive, and simply be recognized. Because of the challenges of history of this island and our own American history, many natives have found it very difficult to maintain their property, either because of heirs' property situations, lack of education, predatory land practices, and even overzealous town pursuit. Most of the island has been built up and overdeveloped to this point except for areas that exist in our historic neighborhoods. Three years ago, town council identified the Gulligici culture here on Hilton Head worth preserving. Out of the planning commission, a task force was created. A consultant was brought in to study the issue. Staff position was created within the town to focus on these issues that were identified in the consultant's study. We have worked tirelessly with the. issues that were identified in the consultant's study. We have worked tirelessly with a diverse group of task force members, and I'm grateful for their work along with staff and elected officials to arrive at this point today. The native islanders have been people who have been disenfranchised for years and generations. That is well documented within the report. A town was planned, a resort was developed, with little or no consideration for the very people who live here. Many people who have properties that are encumbered by heirs' issues, legal encumbrances, physical land structure, or lack of resources and programs to develop and improve the land so that it was a way to generate income and sustainability and not just be a tax burden. In recent years, we have seen a decline in native-owned properties. What was once over 3,000 acres is now down to less than 700 acres of native island-owned acreage. Some have willingly sold portions of property to survive, others have lost properties through questionable deals between family members and opportunistic entities. I want to recognize the town for their efforts to pursue corrective measures to stop the trend of native island land loss. The town has been a leader in purchasing native-owned properties, and now they should be a leader in preserving what is left of the people and the land that is left. I also want to thank the Gullah Gichi Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force and my fellow commissioners for the hard work and dedication to this mission. We have had to examine some exceedingly difficult issues and ask some very hard questions. We've been challenged by the sincerity of an effort to preserve the Gullah Gichi culture. Many people have been misinformed about the intention of this effort and the fear, the changes to policies to promote flexibility in land use and leveling the playing field when it comes to native island owners' participation in growth and development. I encourage everyone to ask questions of the staff and be well-informed when making judgments about equal opportunities for native islanders living in these historic neighborhoods. Staff has worked hard to balance the recommendations of the task force with existing policies and regulations. This is a place to start in bringing this community together. Many residents and visitors have expressed their appreciation of the Gullah Gichi culture and the people who are the living history. I am asking that we continue to find ways forward to build bridges between our divided communities and mend the fences of confusion and misguided understandings. We, the task force, and the town and staff have invested many resources to approach these issues. I believe that we are to be good stewards of these resources. We should make every effort to move forward with these recommendations and continue to be creative in finding solutions to issues facing this culture and this community. In order for there to be a Gullah Gichi culture, the people have to be present, and they have to have a physical existence in this community to survive and thrive. Again, I want to thank everyone for their interest in this especially important subject, and I welcome your input and respect your opinions. I only ask that we receive that same respect and consideration in return. So what's missing? All of us together as one island, one community, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Those are my comments, and I have more thoughts, but I, I won't be, uh, taking up any more of the time. But I wanted to make those opening remarks, and hopefully that will help set the tone of the discussion as we try to move these recommendations forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Stevens. Appreciate those comments. All right. We have Dr. DeBeau, um, who is, uh, who's the Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Administrator, and she is, uh, going to make a presentation. Doctor?
Good morning. Uh, this is Sharice DeBeaus for the record. Um, thank you for hearing me this morning. Uh, I would like to give an overview on the process in establishing the Historic Neighborhoods Overlay District up until this point, and then go through with, uh, what we decided with, uh, what's been decided with the proposed amendments up to this point. Uh, so in 2018, the town hired the Walker Collaborative, a consultant firm, to work with the Gullah Task Force and native island communities to discuss the issues that affect the Gullah population on Hilton Head Island. As a result, uh, the Gullah Gichi Preservation Project Report detailed 37 recommendations under three headings of cultural preservation, heirs' property, and public policy. Uh, the town approved these recommendations along with the framework of top priority projects that were, um, identified by, uh, town staff and the Gullah Task Force working together. And since this time, staff has, uh, worked in support of town council and, um, towards the implementation of these projects. And this started with the historic overlay, which was identified as the top priority project. Um, in preparation for the planning commission meeting, uh, today, 8,000 letters were sent to residents who were either directly affected by the historic overlay and the proposed, uh, zoning change, as well as those within 350 feet surrounding those areas. Also, um, the Historic Neighborhoods Overlay Preservation District was advertised in the island packet. On the town's Facebook page, press releases were created, and a webpage that details the overlay district was added to the town's webpage where a place, where, um, the citizens could respond and make comments. Staff responded to over 60 calls and responded to over 30 emails from citizens with questions and comments about the overlay. In working on this project, staff identified several key recommendations, including increasing density, creating flexibility in development standards by decreasing width to buffers, setbacks in access, and increasing height and impervious cover, and including options for uses that consider the communal living traditions of Gullah landowners by including applications for family subdivision and family compound. These draft amendments were discussed by the Gullah Task Force in several public meetings in July and August. In these discussions, the task force asked for staff to consider more flexibility to accommodate Gullah property owners. Staff presented flex, flexibility deemed appropriate for those affected areas. The task force made their recommendations and voted to pass their recommendations along to the LMO committee. At the LMO committee meeting, concerns were addressed regarding access for family compound and family subdivision being 20 feet, as recommended by the task force. Uh, we were able to come to an agreement, uh, between LMO committee and staff and, um, recognize the purpose for the 30 feet with, uh, right of way to include infrastructure. Staff considered information that was provided to the consultant in terms of a need to increase density, which is another report recommendation, in some areas of the Historic Neighborhoods Zone RM4, and proposed a new RM6 district, which was appropriate. Um, that still considered the historic integrity of these areas and allowing the density increase to create economic opportunities if that was the desire of the property owner. Current LMO calls for rounding down when calculating density. However, it was determined by LMO committee that rounding up would not be appropriate for these areas, so it still remains, um, the same to round down. Um, this is beneficial for everyone when we're considering environmental sensitivity and balancing that with preserving historic integrity. Uh, we also discussed the Marshfront District, uh, particularly the area in Chaplain, um, which is currently at four, um, dwelling units per acre. And, uh, for the purpose of safety and also because of the proximity to Broad Creek, and it was determined by LMO committee that six DU is appropriate, um, rather than the eight DU that was asked for, um, in the previous meeting by the task force. Um, also, we, with the removal, we, uh, there was a concern about the removal of the five-year restriction for selling property compound, the family compound to people outside of the family. And as discussed at the last meeting, um, we're trying to preserve, uh, this district. The goal of the HMPO district is preservation. So, um, it was decided that the, there would be a three-year restriction for that. Uh, when staff began working on these regulations, we did so with the goal of creating flexibility, creative site planning to honor families, increasing density within reason appropriate for impacted areas. And in discussions as to what this would look like, the proposals for this district, um, we think, um, marry both the historic integrity, the economic goals of, um, the property owner, if that's what they desire. And, um, also keep in mind that the regulations do go with the land, not the property owner. And we're hoping that with this, um, historic overlay district, that this encourages the retention of properties within native families. In conclusion, I would like to thank the Gullah Task Force with their role and their help in helping to move this process forward. And thank you for hearing me today. I would like to actually go into where we are at this point, or just to bring everybody up to speed. Yes. So, um, to bring everyone up to speed, the Historic Overlay District, Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Overlay District encompasses the areas that are outlined in pink, uh, where people of Gullah descent traditionally settled, Squire Pope, Jonesville, Spanish Wells, Old House Creek, Gardner, Marshland, Chaplain, Grass Lawn, Big Hill, Mitchellville, and Bake Hall. And these new regulations will cover residential and mixed-use based districts RM6, RM8, RM12, light commercial, marshfront, Mitchellville, neighborhood commercial, resort development, and stony and waterfront, waterfront mixed use. These regulations will exclude PD1s, those are your planned unit developments, and, uh, industrial areas. Um, please note, um, that these, this proposed zoning does not take away density. I had some questions about that. It does not take away from your density. Um, we're just proposing to add density to certain areas. I stated earlier, uh, the Gullah community has a tradition of communal living among extended family members. And so with this, we've added, are proposing to add new applications within the district. The family compound is a single parcel of land owned by family members. Um, here, the infrastructure would be in the order of construction with a three-year hold on selling of the property as determined by the Land Management Ordinance Committee. The family subdivision, the difference between that is you can subdivide your property. Um, you would still have to be in the same family as shown by affidavit. It does not require you to complete infrastructure before putting in the entire, um, subdivision as currently required. And selling the property requires a complete subdivision application, application. Again, we want to discourage the selling of the property so these, these regulations are put into place. Um, also, the two new districts as discussed earlier, um, we have the, the RM6 district, which will allow six dwelling units per acre. Um, we're proposing RM4 become RM6 districts. This includes family, single-family, multifamily, and workforce housing development. And marshfront along major arterials are proposed to be swi, six dwelling units per acre. Proposed LMO changes to reflect setbacks. You can see where the current LMO six says 40 minimum, um, along mono arterial is proposed to go to a 25-foot minimum. All of the streets are reduced by 10 where it's 20. Access easement, uh, proposed for a five-foot minimum from the 20. And adjacent uses have varied, varied between 46, excuse me, uh, 20 and 40 feet. And for adjacent uses, it's a five-foot setback, excuse me, five-foot setback, um, between single-family uses and reduction by 10 if adjacent between other uses. For the buffers, um, the district is proposing to do for single-family, the minimum planting, um, requirements. And for the multifamily, the maximum with planting requirements. Uh, you can see that the single-family, the minimum requirement is a 20-foot minimum. Um, so that's proposed for single-family, um, along the mono arterial. All of the streets, uh, 10-foot minimum and single fam, minimum plantings for single-family, uh, which is a 10-foot minimum planting. And no buffer for along the access easement. And it's also not required for adjacent like uses. Um, with others, if you're adjacent to another use, a minimum planting, um, would be, uh, hold on. It's not required for adjacent like uses. All other requires a minimum planting requirement except for industrial uses, which will have planting plus the fence and the hedge. Uh, also continuous, the pervious cover, um, currently is 35%. In the residential areas, uh, we're proposing that it would be 45% maximum. Building height varies already between 35 and 45 feet. And for areas that have not reached 45 feet maximum, the building height would be 45 feet. And for, uh, access with family subdivision, it's proposed that for five or fewer lots, you have a 20-foot wide easement or 30-foot ri, right of way. Um, and for six or more lots, 30-foot right of way. Family compound is a 20-foot easement. And the application review would be expedited for, uh, for projects within this district. This section will show you what it looks like. So if you look, um, at the green, it shows you where the buffer is. On your, the right, on the left side, it shows where it currently is. It's, um, on the green, it shows you the buffer and that it's a 15-foot buffer on the right side, um, whereas it was 15 to 20 feet. And here it shows you the setback, which is a 20-foot setback as opposed to the 30-foot setback. And a 10-foot setback and buffer off of the access. And the four, the 30-foot right, right of way on your right side versus the, excuse me, 30-foot right of way on your r, right side versus the 40-foot on your left side. Um, so it shows you where the decrease, what the decrease would look like. Here, the compound is a 20-foot access easement with an all-weather driving surface up to the point of development. So you don't have to put in the entire easement first. Um, however, if you're, if you're building all the way in the back, you would. But if you're the first parcel, you would just build it up to the point of development. Here shows a regular subdivision versus, versus a family subdivision. So for your regular subdivision- So for your regular subdivision, you see where you have to put in all of the access and infrastructure. And in the family subdivision, again, you would develop to the point of development. And so this also shows you what four units per acre would look like versus six units per acre would look like. So that would give you your additional units, plus with the reduced buffers and setbacks. So just basically in conclusion, that as stated before, it is a unique place to live where Gullah landowners can have property that's passed down through the generations. Staff heard these concerns by the Gullah Task Force and we worked together to bring forth these recommendations. And the purpose of these recommendations is to encourage landowners to keep their properties and be able to build their family for future generations. And again, I'd like to thank the Gullah Task Force in working with us towards this effort.
Thank you, Doctor. All right, I'll now open a public hearing to take public comments. And each caller will have three minutes to speak. And Teresa will run the timer. And do we have our first individual, Kelly LeBlanc? Is Kelly on the line?
I am on the line. I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Kelly. Please proceed.
First, I'd like to say that I'm a chiropractor on the island. We've lived here, my husband and I have lived here since 2012. I straddle a lot of different people that are interested here. We live on land that's been in the Gullah family since the Civil War. Caesar Jones was the ancestor of my husband. And we live at the end of Jonesville Road. So I'm a business owner. I am not opposed to some of these amendments, but I am opposed to just applying these across the board for people who are either of Gullah descent or not of Gullah descent. So there are a lot of people that are not of Gullah descent that do not want these changes. So they don't need to apply for it to them. My primary concern is this. In the Historic Neighborhood Preservation District amendments, it's Exhibit C, it says the current calculations on density would be rounded down for acreage. The proposed, the calculations for a density would be rounded up to the nearest acre, which would mean that for the density, if it was going to be a six DU per acre, would actually be six DU per point five-one acre, which does not seem to make sense. It seems as though it's a mistake or an oversight, and that needs to be removed. Also, the document says that those round up to the nearest whole acre would be only for the H N P dash O districts, which I don't understand. Why would that only be for that district? That you would round up the acreage? So I suggest that that just be removed from the amendments, the roundup. So I think that overall, the setbacks make sense to me. I, like I said, I'm basically a member of a Gullah family. I understand the Gullah issues. We have a piece of property that we can't develop because it's a long, narrow strip of property that was designed for farmland, not to build on. So the setbacks changes would address that, that we, the people that have those oddly shaped properties would now be able to build on those properties. The increase in density, I don't agree with, and I think it would change the character of the island. We don't have a need on the island to increase our population. I understand that we have a need for workforce housing, but I don't think these changes would address that adequately. I think there are much better solutions. So the other thing that I wanted to ask about in the document, it suggests that the proposed adjacent use be dropped from twenty feet to five feet. That's basically the distance between adjacent houses on different properties owned by different owners. And I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but what I remember is that it would be, if there was a piece of property... Steve Alfred, I think that's you on your phone?
Mr. Chairman, that's the three-minute timer.
I was, some of that was taken up by that phone call. So I'd like to extend at least fifteen more seconds.
Kelly, that was the three-minute timer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. All right, Madeline, is Madeline on the line?
Mr. Chairman, Madeline was unable to attend. She's not on the line.
Okay. Tad Seggers, Tad, are you on the line?
Yes, but I'll pass.
Okay, thank you, Tad. Newton Green?
I'm on the line.
All right. Mr. Green, please proceed.
Good morning. My name is Newton Green, Jr., and I have been a permanent resident on the island since January 2012. I am six generations removed from Caesar Jones and five generations removed from Daniel Frazier. My wife and I live on and own acreage on Jonesville Road. I'd like to start by stating that I fully support concerns, questions, and recommendations just voiced by Dr. LeBlanc, my wife. I have read and wrestled through the documents submitted to the LMO committee written by Dr. DeVois, submitted on September 3rd, 2020. It's a highly detailed description of the Historical Neighborhood Preservation Overlay District amendments. I don't have sufficient planning and development knowledge to challenge most of the material covered, but I am confident that all coverage is well within the legal statutes of South Carolina and specifically the town of Hilton Head. I do have a specific request. That request is in connection with the actual establishment of family compounds and family subdivisions. Definitions of both are well-covered in several sections of the documents, including Section sixteen dash two, one oh three, pages three to eight, Section sixteen dash one, one oh five, pages twenty-four to thirty, with multiple references to other sections of the document and to several references to several mystical codes and ordinances. My specific request is this. That coincident with the addressing of all concerns, questions, and recommendations that may be voiced today leading to the approval of the overlay, there should be the development of the detailed but easily-read document and/or pamphlet of a layperson who wishes to establish a family compound or subdivision. That would facilitate a minimum amount of visits to the town and/or county offices. You may not have, but I have and neighbors have had the experience of attempting to file this or the other document to be told incomplete. You need this, you need that, you need this in duplicate, you need this in triplicate, you need this notarized by, you need this ordinance, et cetera, leading to frustration when simplicity could have been forthcoming. I have not, other than voting, been actively involved with the governing and direction of the island. This LMO has galvanized me to now seek involvement, as I will, beginning with volunteering to participate in the development of such a document as I am requesting. I'd be extremely happy to participate with any official or subcommittee to develop a how-to document for the creation of a family compound or subdivision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Green. All right, next up is Margaret Green Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, she's not on the line at this time.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. All right, George Loud?
Yes, sir, I am on the line.
Thank you, George. Please proceed.
I want to clarify that myself and my neighbors are concerned about a small section of one of these sections of the overlay, specifically the land between the lagoon that runs behind our homes in Marshland Road. I think the problem could be addressed simply by moving the western boundary of the overlay section slightly east of Marshland Road. The reason we're concerned about that land is the proposed changes in the zoning to forty-five feet and the reduction of the setbacks and buffer zones. Further, we have evidence that in the tree line behind our homes along that lagoon, that's the habitat of many waiting birds, including the federally protected endangered species, the wood stork. Again, I think that land can be protected with a slight adjustment of the western boundary of that section of the overlay that's between the lagoon behind our homes and Marshland Road. I might add, I don't understand how this scheme is going to achieve the result of keeping native islander properties in the name of, in the heirs. It seems to me that these proposed changes make that land, at least certainly the undeveloped land, more attractive to a commercial developer. I think the end result's going to be contrary to the stated purpose. That's really all I have to say unless someone wants to ask me a question.
Okay, well, thank you, George, for your comments. Much appreciated. And is Frank Fuze on the line?
Oh, I should add that one of my emails was in air. The email that I sent on one of these, I sent it at ten oh three yesterday morning. I characterized it as showing a wood stork on Bird Island. Actually, it was like, the photo is of the tree line behind one Camden Lane. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for that clarification, sir. And is Frank on the line? I am not hearing from Frank Fuze.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fuze is on the line. If he could just unmute himself?
I just did. Star four?
We can hear you, Frank. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Frank Fuze. I've been a resident of Hilton Head for the past fifteen years. I live on Graham Lane, a cul-de-sac off of Jonesville Road in the Spanish Wells area of Hilton Head. The objection I have to this proposal is the increased density that would be brought into our neighborhoods by RM six. The number of houses that could be built is being increased by, from four per acre to six. Now, that will also bring on increase in impermeable surface coverings, that is driveways and house taking up open space. Now, this open land has a function. It serves as, acts like sort of sponge that absorbs floodwater. And it would be a possibility of causing floods to existing homeowners. That's all I have. I would like to cede the rest of my time to Kelly LeBlanc, if that would be allowed.
No, sir, we don't cede time. But we appreciate your comments.
Okay, well, I will continue using my time. The increased housing to six per acre, I could see how that would benefit a developer. But I don't see anything in it for the existing homeowners. You'd be putting in houses that could possibly overshadow the existing homeowners. You could also be setting up situations that would cause floodwater to stand on the property of existing homeowners. The comments that George made about the wildlife habitat, that is also true. The reason those wood storks are here in the first place is because of habitat destruction in Florida. That drove the wood storks out of their natural range up to this area. Now, if we do the same thing, we will be repeating the same mistakes that were made in South Florida. So here we are. We are doing something that I don't think is in the interest of any of the historic neighborhoods. The motivations behind this proposed change is unclear to me. Who is the driving force behind it? I'm pretty sure that the neighbors, that our current homeowners did not request these changes. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Scott, Taiwan Scott, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Yes, good morning. My name is Taiwan Scott, and I'm the president of Hilton Head Island Local Chapter of National Action Network. First, we want to thank the outside organizations, entities, and groups that have taken time out of their busy schedule to tune into this very important Virtual Planning Commission meeting this morning. We ask everyone listening who has children to imagine how you would feel if you couldn't equally divide, indeed, your children's property without having a substantial financial burden placed upon you. How would you feel if you grew up watching family, community members lose property from skyrocketing taxes? How would you feel watching your heritage, culture, and present systematically being pushed from your native land? The proposed overlay district is actually no different. The proposed overlay district is actually no different than the PUDs, gated communities, or as many would prefer, plantation currently throughout Hilton Head Island. In reality, the native Gullah community is the only community left without an overlay. Many people say they worry about losing the Gullah presence if we are allowed higher density and relaxed portability. The Gullas have been in a continuous fight and struggle to retain their presence ever since Hilton Head was incorporated. For you who don't know, there have been hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on consulting and studies since Hilton Head was incorporated. We only ask that this government listen to the Gullah natives. We have been asking for opportunity in a level playing field for years. Our Gullah native elders have sat down with countless council members and consultants. Once again, we find ourselves up against the wall because people who moved here from other areas come with the mentality in which they believe they can control not only what belongs to them, but they want to control what belongs to others as well. When will the Gullah community be listened to and changes be made? The passing of the Gullah Geechee recommendations and overlay is a start in the right direction for equity for the natives. With the amount of successful and educated people living on this island, we're pretty sure that if this community really wants to help Gullah natives retain their presence and partake in this prosperous economy, creative, public, and private opportunities can and will be achieved. By Hilton Head passing and initiating this overlay, a presence can be established, and Hilton Head can become a leading municipality throughout the Gullah Geechee corridor. The Gullah native community has been waiting to be heard for years, and moving the recommendations forward can be a beginning for bridging some of the level of trust between the government and the native Gullas. Please take advantage of this opportunity and respect the wishes, tireless efforts of the Gullah Geechee tax, native island community members, and especially our ancestors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Ibrahim Abdul Malik, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir. Please proceed.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. My name is Ibrahim Abdul Malik, and I'm currently a member of the task force that has put forward these recommendations. And I want to state that the work of this task force is but a continuation in the efforts of African-Americans on Hilton Head. of African-Americans on Hilton Head to be treated fairly and equitably by the town government. We have had studies after studies, initiatives after initiatives, master plans after master plans, recommendations after recommendation. The native concerns within the native African-American community, and what do we have to show for it? Multicolored signs that show the boundaries where native African-Americans perhaps used to live. I can say that I have witnessed an increase in land values, but I have also seen a decrease in the value of native African-Americans' presence on their centuries-old family lands. Thirty-five years ago, native African-Americans stood up and said that in limited services of government, would only limit services for the people living outside of the gated neighborhoods. Not only were the services limited, access to soil, drainage, maintenance, road pavements were not given any particular priority for native island neighborhoods, but restrictions and limits were now being placed on traditional land usages. Being a small landowner, which applies to the majority of the native islanders, land use is a fundamental part of a cultural lifestyle and a key in maintaining our land. These recommendations that have been put forward after three years of diligent work are the latest in a set of recommendations being put forward to have a sustained presence of the native African-Americans on Hilton Head. And it's time for us to turn this page because we have been on this page way too long. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mrs. Abdul Malik, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, ma'am. Please proceed.
Yes. My name is, uh, Muntahana Abdul Malik, and I'm a Gullah descendant, born and raised on Hilton Head Island. And I was, I was involved with the RUDAC study and other studies with my father way back in, in the eighties, um, along with other previous generations. It's saying that most of what we asked for then is still, still being asked for in 2020. I fully support the recommendations being put forth by the task force. I know that they're not perfect. I want to see more done. So, will my children and grandchildren after me will not be dealing with these same issues. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Teresa, do we have anyone else, um, who is on our docket to speak?
Yes, sir. Next, we have, uh, Mr. Philip Smith.
Mr. Smith, please proceed. Mr. Smith, are you on the line?
Mr. Chairman, we do have Mr. Philip Smith on the line. He may need to unmute on his end. Mr. Philip Smith, um, we do see that you're unmuted on, on both ends. Are you there? Mr. Chairman, um, we can move on to the next caller and circle back to Mr. Smith. Uh, we have...
Let's do that, Teresa.
Sure. Mr. Steve Clark.
Mr. Clark, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Clark, thank you. Please proceed.
Uh, greetings, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak on behalf of my family, neighbors, and friends on this important issue of land management. As you, I like to stay informed of current events, and sometimes I find myself agreeing in the situation, or sometimes just shaking my head and wonder. This will be neither of those. I have to speak out for what I believe is a sham, or shame, or maybe both. I read the executive summary, Gullah Geechee Culture Preservation's project report. The project purpose was to identify and assist in the preservation of the Gullah Geechee, Gullah Geechee culture. I know for years the town's been trying to figure a way to develop all the underdeveloped area on the north end of the island in Mitchellville. Like, if you have five acres, you have builder's rights, or merge properties unconnected and make five acres so you can have builder's rights. It makes it easier to develop. So, with that said, you know when you take your car to get the oil changed, and mechanic comes out and tells you you need new wipers, it looks like a front-end alignment is in order, and probably want to get that transmission serviced? That's what garages do. It's in their blood. They can't help it. I think that's what happened here. A developer wants to develop. It's an insatiable need to rip out the woods and build new buildings. It's what they do. How does it look when the document to save the heritage and property says on the next page, "Allow higher density so that landowners can better leverage their potential land value. Reduce setback and buffer requirements so that the landowners can maximize their development potential. Reduce the land management ordinance' open space requirements so that the landowners can maximize their development potential." No way. No way will this profound rezoning help preserve anything on this little island. No way. Taller structure squeezed together, five feet from the road, with no barriers, no open spaces, a developer's dream come true. And guess what? Since the property is worth a whole lot more than it was, the Gullah neighborhoods are sold to the highest bidder. It's a sham, don't you think? The African-American population was seven point five percent in two thousand and ten. It'll be two and a half percent in two thousand and twenty-two, and that will be a shame. I believe there's a ton of great ideas to advance the Gullah Geechee community in this document, besides high-density clusters with taller heights, less setbacks, closer together, and less open space. Please don't offer up their precious land in this way to the developers. No one on this island wins. No one. And this doesn't even address FEMA and DEHEC and the fire and rescue and the road debacle. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Do, do we have another speaker, Teresa?
Yes, sir. I thought we could try Mr. Philip Smith again.
Okay, Mr. Smith, you on the line?
Okay, we do have some more callers. We can move on to Mr. Alex Brown.
Okay. Welcome, Alex.
Yes, great morning. Wanted to sound check, make sure everyone can hear me.
We can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Um, I'm hearing a lot of great, great comments here, um, this morning, and, um, I, I'm gonna start my comments with a, I guess a quote that I stole from Dr. Emory Campbell here. We, we've got a lot of talk about the word preservation, and it can be defined in many different ways, but the way Dr. Campbell defined preservation as it relates to Gullah property owners is the opportunity to use our land to self-sustain into perpetuity. So, I want to direct my comments to, and hope I have a keen ear in listening to the Director of Community Development and the Deputy Director of Community Development, in asking them to put forth a grave effort in standing up the position of the Historic Neighborhood Preservation Administrator. That job was intended to have a direct line on the organizational chart to the Deputy Director of Community Development, and not be buried within the Community Development arm that was producing the comprehensive plan. That position was never intended to merely be a land planner. I'm gonna read just for a moment some sections of the class specification, Community Development, Class Code three zero six eight, which describes the Historic Neighborhood Preservation Administrator. One of the general duties is to, under the supervision of the Deputy Director of Community Development, but also have considerable leeway to exercise independent judgment and initiative. It also states that the position is to advise community groups, property owners, contractors, developers, and architects on land and cultural preservation-related issues. Also states that they should research, write, design, and publish educational materials on historic neighborhood preservation, earth property protection, and infrastructure improvement related topics, which you have heard on this call here today, that there's confusion and there's need for supplication. We are looking to preserve Gullah properties here, and again, I'm asking that they stand the position up to help do so. Be that way. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate your comments. Teresa, do we have another caller?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lance Pyle.
Lance, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Please provide your comments.
Mr. Commissioner, Chairman, uh, I appreciate your time this morning and giving us the opportunity to speak. Uh, when I look at the, uh, overlay maps and the, uh, RM to RM six, uh, parcels, um, it does tend to be a bit confusing when there are significantly developed parcels already there. Um, as a, as a landowner and resident in Carolina Isles, our property, uh, and community is part of that. Uh, when I look at China Berry, Squire Gate, um, uh, the Paddock, Beach City Place, Jarvis Creek Club, Little Harbor, there's many that are listed within this, uh, RM four, RM six area, which I don't think is the intent, um, for those properties to be part of a rezoning or redevelopment section of the island. In addition to that, when I look at the, uh, number of properties that back up to existing properties, um, or developments, that's a concern when we start talking about density increase and setback reduction. I'm not sure I clearly see that there is, that was taken into consideration for parcels that back up to an existing development to reduce those setbacks, um, to move those homes closer to an existing development, where there should be some consideration for those properties that had to meet a certain setbacks when they had to develop their property from that adjacent property line. What I don't understand is in the zoning districts, you currently have, uh, different zoning districts in there, and to create another one, I'm not sure makes sense. I think well-developed properties, um, there are well-developed properties throughout the island that clearly have met the current guideline. If the goal is to preserve, and I think the word preserve, uh, can be defined in different ways, but if you're looking to preserve the Gullah, uh, community properties, which I think is great, then the preserve end of that being that they're gonna stay in family compounds, why not create a family district compound similar to what you've done in PD, uh, areas and, and allow the Gullah community to develop those areas with restrictions and guidelines that has, uh, a development that enhances our, our community versus what we see on Gumtree Road where we have three trailers randomly placed throughout that now have tents and, and other stuff placed throughout the community? Um, I'm not sure that's the intent or goal that, that, that is enhancing or growing the island. So, my question would be is, why don't we revisit this to look at it as a family camp, uh, compound issue and preserving those properties?
Thank you, Lance, for your comments. Much appreciated. Teresa?
We have Ms. Roselle Wilson.
Ms. Wilson, are you on the line? Ms. Wilson?
Ms. Wilson, we see you're on the line.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Ms. Wilson. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the planning board, uh, for an opportunity to comment this morning. Um, I'm rising to support the continuous efforts of the native island Gullah community on Hilton Head Island. Uh, there've been many efforts over the years since before the town was initially organized to create and extend a collaboration between the town council and the leadership of the Gullah community. Our community, One Island, is moving in the direction of that collaboration. The Native Island Business and Community Affairs Association, or NIPCA, supports the addition of amendments to the Land Management Ordinance to provide a Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Overlay District for our historic neighborhoods within the Gullah community. Since eighteen sixty-five, Gullah communities have fought to hold and control their land and have an opportunity to take part in the vast growth economically in our community. Over the years, Hilton, the Hilton Head RUDAC report, the response to the RUDAC report, and the adoption of the Ward One Master Land Use Plan have helped to bring us to this juncture. Today, the Gullah Geechee Task Force, along with the latest consultant's recommendations, the Walker Collaborative, have recommended to the Planning Commission move forward and approve these amendments to the Land Management, uh, Ordinance. The Native Island Business and Community Affairs Association, or NIPCA, supports the continuous work efforts of the task force and its leadership to direct the specific tasks approved in our deliberations. On behalf of NIPCA and our Board of Directors, we urge the Planning Commission and Town Council to approve and move forward with these amendments. Now is the time. Respectfully submitted, the Board of Directors of NIPCA, the Native Island Business and Community Affairs Association, Mr. Eric C. Turpin, Executive Director, Native Island Business and Community Affairs Association, submitted by Dr. Roselle L. Wilson, Vice Chair of the Native Island Business and Community Affairs Association. Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Much appreciated. Teresa?
Uh, up next, we have Mr. Keith Sledge. Mr. Sledge, are you on the line?
Are you on the line, sir?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir. Please proceed.
Great. I appreciate the commission's time this morning. I'll try to be brief. Uh, I'm a resident of Hilton Head, living in the Chaplain area of the Historic Overlay District, and I'm requesting that if this district, uh, the overlay districts are approved... And I'm requesting that if this district, uh, the overlay districts are approved, that the properties due to the eastern side of Highway 278 in the Chaplain District be removed. Uh, my reasons are as follows. There are no M, there are no marshfront or RM4 properties in this area on the eastern side of 278. The marshfront-zoned properties falling between Highway 278 and Broad Creek in this Chaplain area certainly should remain because they'll be affected. Um, there are currently several RM8-zoned lots remaining undeveloped in our area. And my concern, as well as that of a number of our neighbors, is that a developer would request for the town to relax the LMO rules applied to their lots in this RM8 area for the benefit of the developer and to the detriment of the other property owners. Several special accommodations have been granted to developers in the recent past, which have had a detrimental effect on our community. And this has produced negative changes in the character of our neighborhood. We can't afford to provide developers a potentially easier path toward requesting special accommodations and potentially using this new zoning overlay to justify increasing density for their benefit and certainly to no benefit of the Gullah-Gi'chi community. Since there is no benefit to the Gullah-Gi'chi descendants within this area, it should be removed from the overlay. I want to be certain to, uh, to be clear here. I fully support the efforts in maintaining and supporting the Gullah-Gi'chi community on Hilton Head, but it's, it's not apparent that there'd be any benefit to them in including the area on the eastern side of 278 in the Chaplain Zone to be included in the Historic Overlay Preservation District. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Teresa?
Mr. Chairman, we have Luana Grave Cellar and Marcus T. Hall signed up to speak. However, we do not see, we haven't seen them on the call since the meeting has started. And we have, I'm sorry.
They said I'm unmuted now, Teresa?
Is this Mr. Philip Smith?
It is.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith, we're glad we were able to find the technology to get you on. Please proceed.
Thanks for the 21st century technology and, uh, good morning, everybody. Yeah, my name is Philip Smith. I'm the President of Oak Marsh Property Owners Association. I've lived on Hilton Head for 40 years and in Oak Marsh for 24. For those of you who don't know, it's off Spanish Wells Road. I represent 32 homeowners from our association. And while we respect all the hard work and time the Gullah Task Force has put into this, we oppose the HNPO in its current form. First off, it's too complicated and there's no way to enforce compliance. Current LMOs are not enforced now. Its lack of setbacks and RM6 density increase designations, especially along marsh areas already pressured by the current LMO, will only do further damage to the island. There are select few people that will benefit from this. This proposal will also be used as a tool to further the exodus of the Gullah-Gi'chi community, not enhance or preserve it. We wholly support the Gullah-Gi'chi community and mourn the loss this week of a great man, Saul Campbell, and propose, in that spirit, a special tax district. Set up a tax district in the overlay in the same manner that the Simmons property right now has. They're taxed on about eight acres, eight to nine acres at $68 a year. It's taxes farmland. Think for a moment what that would do, both economically and historically, to preserve history and family compounds. There would be no more tax sales of historic Gullah-Gi'chi properties if you would recommend this proposal. It can be done if you think about it. It would receive close to unanimous backing from the community, and we believe the county, where it should be also adopted. One property just recently sold was Christopher Lane for around $18,000 at the last auction. That would not happen anymore. We also proposed, when the owner of a property wishes to sell a Gullah-Gi'chi, uh, wishes to sell their property, a Gullah-Gi'chi member would have first right of refusal. After that right of refusal was turned down or not accepted, the town would have second right of refusal. The plan is simple. It should be endorsed and used throughout Beaufort County. The LMO, as bad as it is now, currently is, should be followed by all, and no more destruction of the island, especially around the marshes, should be allowed. This doesn't mean no construction, just wise, environmentally conscious construction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Teresa, do we have anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, um, I think we do have Ms. Luana Grave Cellar on the line.
Luana, are you on the line?
We'll need her to unmute herself, please.
Luana, if you can hear me, check your phone and unmute yourself. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Luana.
Hi. You can hear me now?
We can hear you now, Luana. Go ahead and proceed. It's good to have you on.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Good morning. Um, for the record, I am, uh, speaking as a representative of the Native Island Leadership with the following statement. First of all, we'd like to thank you for adding the Gullah-Gi'chi Task Force recommendations to your agenda. To some residents, the recommendations might be something that was created within recent history or in, or in response to current events. For Native Islanders, the fact that these recommendations are going through the process to coming to realization are, before your committee today, is an important milestone for our commi, community. For years, the Gullah community has been looking for the town to recognize and support our culture. In recent years, the town stated dedication to preserving Gullah culture and the hiring of the Walker Collaborative, who specifically focused on our longstanding issues, are part of what we have been fighting for, for generations. The recommendations that are before you today are important because they represent what we see as a united step towards fixing issues that are long overdue. They are a positive direction towards righting several residential wrongs, and as such, we believe that the recommendations before you should be executed. While we realize that the recommendations as written should be considered as a living document, we appreciate your review of them as recommended, as well as your approval. It's not a final solution, but a coordinated effort between us to provide our community with the equal chance for growth, development, and sustainability. Thank you in advance for your time, effort, and support of the recommendations today on behalf of the Native Island community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Luana, for your comments. Much appreciated.
Appreciate, Mr. Chairman.
Teresa, anyone else? Teresa, you still with us?
Mr. Chairman, uh, that's all we have. You are free to close the public hearing.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. And we will have a discussion, and we have an order. And Teresa calls your name, please provide any comments or questions to the staff. Teresa, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have Vice Chairman Stevens.
Thank you, Teresa. I want to thank the public for participating into this discussion today. Uh, as Chairman of the Gullah-Gi'chi Task Force is something that I have been begging for for almost three years now. Uh, I know that people are very interested in what happens when it affects their particular community or neighborhood. Uh, this document is something that we have worked on with staff, and I've encouraged staff to be creative in their thinking and to think outside the box to find some suitable solutions to some of these very difficult issues and challenges. Some of the public that has called in and commented on various items, I think are very helpful, and I hope that's, is taking note of the energy and the creativity that we are using to define solutions that are beneficial to our common good. It is tough to find one size that will fit all. But I think that some of the larger themes that I've heard and that I've tried to express is that this is a place to start, and certainly, uh, these recommendations will help in the participation of the Historic Neighborhoods, excuse me, and our Native Islanders as we participate in preserving this culture. What seems to be special exceptions or special considerations actually are probably more viewed from Native Island community as catching up. We've noticed over the past years in history of the development of this town and other communities, uh, where things have been worked out with staff or with developers, and there have been ways, we found ways to make projects work. I think that's the only thing that we are asking for when we talk about preserving the culture, is to try to find ways to make it work. For too many years now, uh, the dynamics of property owners in these historic neighborhoods have had issues that, when presented to town or to staff, usually the first or second answer is, no, no way, nothing you can do. That creates a hardship in a lot of ways to p, to try to maintain a piece of property that you can't really, really do anything with or to use. I can't speak on what's in a person's heart or what their intentions are. I think that we, as a municipality, cannot also be in a position of telling people what we think they might do and put some things in place to keep them from having the freedom to do whatever it is they choose with their property. Our first goal would be for them to maintain it and to preserve and to be able to use it to, uh, sustain themselves economically. Putting things in place that say you can't do this for five years or three years or two years, I feel like is a little overreaching. Uh, what we can do is make these properties a little more attractive so that they find creative ways to, again, generate some income and sustainability and catch up with the rest, rest of the development that has been created on this island. I think that's all we're asking for, is to simply, uh, be recognized and to be recognized in a fair and equitable way as, uh, we, again, are working behind and catching up with other developments and communities that have already been established on top of a lot of these areas. Is it a perfect plan? It may not be. I don't know if there is a perfect plan that exists. But I think this is a great place to start, and, uh, I'm, I'm happy that we are to this point. But we have been to this point many times before in past years. Uh, as mentioned before, some of the elders of the island of this culture, Dr. Campbell, the Barnwells, the Whites, and so many other family names that have come before us in these same efforts have shared the same frustrations from what I've heard. So I'm very passionate about this today, and I'm very anxious to try to change some things very progressively as we continue to try to work through the culture of the town and the structure of the town and how we operate and the transparency and the true sincerity of the efforts that we are making in order to help preserve this culture and also to be harmonious in how we exist and live with other people in this community. Those are my comments for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Levon.
Ms. McGowan?
Thank you. The LMO Committee has, it's been a very difficult balancing act because, um, we want to give boost to the Native Island property owners, but we don't want to negatively impact either the Native Islanders who are not property owners or the adjoining homeowners and properties. That being said, yeah, this is not a perfect document, but we've, a good first go and needs to be really companion to other efforts in the town, including, if possible, some kind of tax, tax relief, um, package, as, as mentioned by one of the callers. I do want to point out, um, there is no longer a rounding up in this, um, proposed ordinance. That's been removed. And with regard to environmental concerns, um, and, and I hope staff will interrupt me if I'm wrong, but I believe that, um, environmental regulations such as wetlands or endangered species would still apply to, to Native Islander properties. That, um, and lastly, um, a technical thing, I think, we, we talked about this on the committee, but when, I think that if you have a proposed subdivision that is higher density than even if it's adjoining existing a residential, that there should be a greater, a greater buffer than currently proposed in the, in the ordinance. Um, when we had talked about it, the feeling, the feeling of the staff was residential next to residential did not need the buffer, but you have a few instances in a town where you could have, um, six to the acre next to much lower density and, and to preserve, make good neighbors and, um, allow peace to, to reign, I think that we should, um, address a better buffer provision between, um, unlike residential densities as well as unlike uses. Um, that's all I have for now.
Mr. Theodore?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I agree with everything that's been said, uh, to date. The, um, I do have a question, if I may ask, um, Carrie Lewis, if she's still there, question?
Yes, she is.
Thank you. Hey, Carrie. There were some comments about environmental concerns. These ordinances, from what I understand, they don't change environmental regulations. Is that correct?
You're correct.
Yeah, so, so really, everything is still governed by the same rules and regulations that we have had in place as well. So adjacency to marshes and all that kind of stuff still fall with, under those same regulations?
They do, and we still have protection for the environment through what's in the LMO today.
Yeah, um, and, and that's what I, I thought. The, uh, and I, and I would say that there was a comment about a sham. Um, and, you know, I'm kind of like Levon. We, we've been involved in this process for going on three years now, and this has really been sort of a bottom-up process with community, Native Islander community input. So there's, there's no sham here. There isn't a developer in the background that is pushing this. So I just want to make sure that I, um, express that comment that, um, we've had a lot of great, uh, involvement. The, the Task Force has done a great job. The community input through the whole process has been great. And then I've been part of the, uh, LMO Committee as well, and the, all those processes, um, have been open to the public and, uh, and it's had great, uh, community input during that process. So I would like to, uh, reiterate that. So, um, I think to where we are to date has been a, a good process. Like, uh, Chairman, Chairperson McGowan said, that it's not perfect, but it's a step forward. That's all my comment. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Um, a couple of things. As a member of the LMO Committee as, as well as on the Commission, I personally have problems with, uh, limiting what a person can do with their own property. I'm a big believer in property I'm a big believer in property rights and the freedom of owners to do what they can within the laws and requirements and restrictions. But when when someone lobbies for a special favors for any reason to add density to property and the like, I do think it's right for us to put various provisions against the abuse of that. I want to support the Gullah Gichi community and the culture. And there are a couple of issues, though, that do concern me. I firmly believe that the concept of a family compound or even a family subdivision, I'm okay with that. And I'd like to make sure that these properties can be kept within the family for future generations. The, several of the callers have made points which I think are valid. Mr. Green, I believe it was, talked about literature to explain, you know, the how-to on a family compound or subdivision. I think that's a great idea that we should add to our thinking. I keep asking myself, is this a family preservation move? Or is this a fast track to flip-flop development? That's the one thing in the back of my mind. And I know there's, is, I think it was Todd said, there's nobody, there's no developer behind all this. And, you know, I understand that. But believe me, when restrictions are dropped here and there for whatever reason, they'll be coming out of the woodwork, I'm afraid. And let me ask you, if if a property is flipped, let's say we declare something a family compound or a family subdivision, if it's flipped, you know, how do we go back? And we've lowered the, go back to a lower density on the property and the setbacks and the access widths and all that? What do we do if it's flipped later on, maybe three, five, 10 years down the road? And once it's developed in a certain fashion as a family compound or subdivision, if it's flipped at that point, you know, how do we go back? That's the question that I have. I do think the taxation angle that was raised by one of the callers there is something that we probably need to think about as the county as well. I know that this has been in development a long time. I know there's a lot of people been waiting a long time for this action. But I seen, seems a little bit rushed. I'd rather do it right than do it fast. It's not a perfect plan. There are frustrations on every side, I'm sure. But a lot of the comments are about, everything is said is about increasing the value of the land. Well, are we making it a family compound or subdivision? Are we trying to increase the value of the land so a developer will come out of the woodwork? That's the one thing that still causes me some concern. I also agree with my LMO chair that the buffers between lower density property near next door or other uses, I think that the, we should probably have a stricter rule on those types of buffers. Mr. Chairman, I yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Mark, I believe you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions here. But first, I'd like to say again, as was some of the processes for this planning commission, this has been very well done. It's been thorough. There's been lots of opportunity for input and discussion. A question I have for Chairman Stevens of the Gullah Gichi Task Force would be, what were the main sources of complication that you dealt with in the committee that said, this is an issue that we just have to take a stance on? What I'm really asking here is how the committee dealt with some of the comments that came from those that were on the periphery of being affected by this amendment? Because you've come up with these recommendations and they seem pretty solid to me, but you heard a lot of questions from the public.
Well, one of the best answers I can give you, maybe one phrase or two, is the ability of the property owners to have some flexibility with their, how they use their land. A lot of native island property is not perfectly squared. It has dynamics that, not like planned unit developments. They're not like gated communities. They're split, they're divided, they're long narrow strips. So there are some challenges that folks have with their property. Increasing density was not one of the things that we could do or so we were told because of septic tanks, for example. We have sewer now, so we have better ways of, you know, visiting that issue. And increasing that density is more than just increasing the density to create the more value to the property, but to give them more flexibility in using their property. It may impact how some people, I would also say that we're in fear of developers coming in and people infiltrating or taking advantage of these changes. I would submit to you that that's already happening. It has been happening for years. Developers have been coming in. They have been working out things with town and staff, and these things have been able to go forward. Now, some people may agree with that and they may not agree with it, but these things are already happening. This overlay district is not going to create anything new in that area. So that's, again, is what I think we're asking for is just to bring this part of the community up to the level of playing field. That, along with the tax issue, is one of the other things that we find that folks have property that they're paying taxes on that they can't do anything with. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Yeah, it really does. I'm always in favor of property rights and people being able to determine their own future. And one of the comments I listened carefully to is this bit about, yes, we're here to preserve the Gullah culture, but someone might feel that, well, we're going to destroy the Gullah culture because of some of these amendments. The good thing about this is that's the decision of the people who were here first and whose land it is. So even if it doesn't go the way we all hope it goes, at least the community itself has had sufficient input and is making some decisions that they are in control of as opposed to the rest of the island. And I think in this case, that's fair.
That completes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say that a huge kudos out to the Gullah Gichi Task Force, Mr. Stevens, and the rest of the task members. This is a very, very sensitive and important issue for our community. And the way it is being addressed and being discussed, I think, is stellar. And I want to bring some, to light some concerns that I have. Back in 2014, we rushed through an LMO which changed some of the developing rights that we saw. It allowed for larger, taller buildings. It opened up for clear cutting. It provided some real damage to our community. Since then, those changes have been corrected. I have a concern with the historic overlay map. And I'd like to ask the question, what that represents in terms of acres? Dr. DeBose, do you know?
I don't have those numbers offhand, but I can certainly get that.
So when we talk about 700 acres of land, it looks like the map is representative of a lot more than 700 acres. And if I'm not mistaken, I think I read at one point in time, it represents about 2,500 acres. So when we show a map to the public that is 28% is Gullah Gichi land or native island land, it's not representative of exactly what's going on. And when we put an overlay district and we start talking about LMO changes exactly in existing PUDs, I think that that map has got to be truly reflective of the land that we are talking about and in exactly what can be done where. I also want to ask the question, is it done in such a way to allow or to show where possible transfer of density of rights could happen in the future?
It is not at this time to show that.
Okay, and so in the same comment, at the same time, we're also talking about workforce housing and how that is going to affect certain areas. We're talking about this. So there's a lot of things that are on the plate that affect a lot of different areas of our community. It changes the scope of our community, it changes the look of our community. So I agree with the comments that were stated earlier that pushing this through without a clear understanding of how it affects every property owner within that historic overlay, I don't see that it's serving the purpose. To do something for the Gullah Gichi community, absolutely. And I think that it has been stated by some of the members of the task force and some of the Gullah community that while it's not perfect, it is a step in the right direction. Well, to pass an LMO amendment that gives additional density and reduces buffers and we don't understand the true effect on all areas is not a service to our community. And we talk about one community, so we have to look at this as one community. And I'd like to see more definition, more detail on the areas that will be affected. And let's see here. You know, but a lot of people talking this morning, a lot of different notes. But I think, I think for now, that'll end my comments. And I do want to reiterate, kudos to the task force and a great, great job.
Thank you, Alan. Steven, your comments?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Steven. Mr. Campbell? Yeah, unmute yourself, John.
I have one question to Ms. Dr. DeBose and Mr. Stevens. I know this is increase in density. And my question is that will the owners of the property be able to transfer density to one piece of property to another? Or will they be able to sell their increased density rights?
Hold on just a moment. Let me check on that.
Yeah, I believe the staff will have to answer that for you. Has been discussed, but I don't think we've had a clear answer on that.
Yes, that's actually another recommendation that was not listed as top priority, but it's not included within this overlay district.
Okay.
You have any other comments, Mr. Campbell?
No, that's it.
Okay, well, I have a few, and I want to echo the comments of all the commissioners that we really appreciate the work of the Gullah Gichi Task Force. This has been a huge undertaking. And also echo some of the concerns that were raised of unattended consequences when you go into a document that has the depth and breadth of this undertaking. And I have a question for Terry that I posed to her before. Terry, why are the already developed properties in this historic district? And I can read off, you know, probably eight of them. Bermuda Point, China Berry, Carolina Isle, Oak View, Paddocks, Jarvis Creek Club, Marshside, Marsh Point. These are already developed properties. Why would they be included in historic overlay district when this property is not in the hands of native islanders? It's already developed to a standard that the community is comfortable with. And what effect, why not just take those properties out?
Those properties are already in the historic neighborhoods. So theoretically, you know, if they're built, then they can be left as they are. But if somewhere were to build it in that property, they could build to the new standards, the way it's proposed.
So if a house was destroyed for fire or for flood or some other reason, they could take advantage of those, the new overlay district?
Yes, sir.
And that would put them...
Unless there's, unless there's a covenant that prevents them from...
We don't know that, do we?
No, we don't have that knowledge.
Why not, instead of subjecting those neighborhoods to the uneasiness, and it may not be that they're, maybe that they're subject to a single-family development, but they would also then be able to use the setback requirements, the new setback requirements, which would also put them out of character with that particular community?
Yes, sir, you can look at that.
And, you know, and I have received many concerns from, and we've heard those today, from folks who live in those communities that, you know, that would be something that they would not want to happen, you know, to their individual community because someone could take advantage of that and build or produce a setback if, God forbid, there was some type of a catastrophic incident. Or someone just wanted to tear down their house and build it to the new standard. They could take advantage of those setbacks because a lot of those communities don't have setback requirements. They relied on the town setback requirements.
Yes, sir.
And the other question that came up was, and it was raised, and I think Mr. Perry raised it as well. If you have an existing subdivision that is next to a piece of property that is owned by the Gullah community, shouldn't there be some type of, you know, consideration for an existing setback from those two differing pieces of property?
Hi, this is Terry Lewis. So right now, as drafted, what if, if the uses are similar, there is no buffer. There is a setback, but there's no buffer between like uses. And that's not just in the historic neighborhoods preservation overlay district. That's throughout the LMO.
Okay, so if you have a, if someone backyard, yard backs up to another backyard, it is the same setback? There's no change in that?
Well, so there's a, between buffers and setbacks. So right now, there's no buffer between like uses.
Okay, when you say like uses, are you talking about residential or you're talking about the specific density? Or the density does not matter, Terry?
So when we talk about single family to single family, then there's no buffer. Now, if we talk about multifamily to single family, then there would be a buffer.
Okay.
But if you're talking about a single-family neighborhood at four dwelling units per acre adjacent to a single-family neighborhood at six dwelling units per acre, there wouldn't be a buffer under the historic neighborhoods preservation overlay district amendments.
Okay. Roads in the family compounds, would they be able to remain unpaved? Or were they required to be paved, Terry?
So right now, what we're proposing in the family compound, and I'll have to look back.
Family compound is...
The family compound would still be an access easement? And it would not be required to be paved? However, the family subdivision would require a right-of-way for more than, I believe, for six or more lots.
And that would be required to be paved?
In the family compound, it's an all-weather driving surface for the 20-foot access easement. And in the family subdivision, if you're doing a right-of-way, it's a paved right-of-way for 30 foot.
Okay, and is there adequate road right-of-way on either side of that, doctor, to allow for the utilities to go in?
With the 30-foot right-of-way, it would be.
Okay. Those are, you know, I applaud this effort. I believe that every property owner, as has been stated, should be able to maximize the use of their property and get the best dollar they can for it. use of their property and get the best dollar they can for it, and develop it within the LMO and the land management ordinances. I share the concern of some that this may accelerate rather than preserve the native islanders, but as many people have stated, that is going to be the choice of the landowner. And I can't, we cannot control the choices of the landowner. But I do strongly feel that the already established subdivisions should not be included in this overlay district, and they should be removed. And, you know, that should be part of any recommendation that we move forward. There will be many, many unintended consequences if those developed properties who relied on the present LMO for the quality of life and the setbacks that they have, that this not affect them in a future, in a future situation. Okay, we have one more round of comments after we've heard each other speak, and rather than have Teresa call or roll up, I'll go through it. Alan, your second shot at it?
Yeah, so I do have something else. The one thing I haven't really read much about is development standards. And I think, I think there's a lot of questions by the general public as to what can be utilized, what can be done on these properties. So what are the design requirements? What's the design review? What are the design standards, types of structures that we can have on these properties? And what is the infrastructure requirements for these properties as well? Are they required to put in sewer? Are they allowed to have septic? What is that that's required for the development standards within the overlay?
Thank you, Alan. Levon?
That was a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Alan.
That's a question. I mean, that needs to be, that really needs to be addressed, because I've had some conversations with folks out there, and they're really confused by this document. It's 224 pages, you know, for today's meeting, and there's a lot of information in there that's not in layman's terms. So I do, I do want to know, I do want to hear about development standards on these properties.
Yes, sir. So if you're within the proposed overlay district, there have been changes to the setbacks and the buffers. So if you're along a minor arterial, it's calling for a 25-foot setback, and currently it's at 40.
Dr. DeBose?
Yes, sir.
I'm really talking more about the process, and, you know, I understand about the setbacks and all that that we're talking about within the LMO changes. But in terms of providing a structure or development or a compound or subdivision on that property, you know, are they required to input, go through PSD and put in, you know, sewer?
Yes, yes, sir, they are.
Okay, on all properties?
On all properties that's being developed under this, yes.
Okay, and what types of structures are allowed on these properties? Are mobile homes, manufactured homes?
Yes, sir. How it is currently, stickboat homes, mobile homes, manufactured, yes, sir.
Okay, and are there design requirements that go into these properties that will be reviewed by the town DRB?
This is still under the same design requirements. There was, there is a recommendation to do a design guide, but that was not top priority, that's a separate recommendation. But just the current, the way it's currently is now.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Alan. Levon?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments and the concerns, but I think to maybe help with Alan in the previous questions and concerns, yes, the town already has a few layers and not looking to change any of those things that are in place. A lot of the communities already have their covenants and things in place, as we've mentioned before, and they're already built out. So I don't believe that these, this overlay district will affect them in such a way. I do appreciate the comment about consideration of maybe even removing some of those areas. But these are the kinds of things that we talked about in our task force at the task force level, where we talk about case studies and testing these properties to see how they would be affected. So I encourage staff to continue with those studies and to be able to share that with this commission as well. I am hoping that today, again, we can move forward with this. I believe if we continue to keep going backwards and try to find that perfect document, we'll be here for another 40 years. And some of the things that have happened in the past, I don't want to repeat those mistakes, I hope that we learn from them. But again, the perception is, is that other things have been allowed to happen, and they've been allowed to happen by, if you will. I think that the work that we've done has been very thorough, and it should be moved forward, because we can, this is a living document, and it will always have some challenges as we continue to make progress in this community. Some things will be challenged, and we'll find out new information. But this work, this body of work is done very well to this point. I believe that the Gullah native island community is certainly asking for even more than what's presented here today. So there are some compromises being made on both sides, so to speak. And certainly those concerns about the environmental impacts, again, there are things that are already in place by the town and the regulations and ordinances that we already have in place. I don't want to start a whole bunch of tit-for-tat and back and forth with some of those items like environmental impact. This island has already been impacted by what's been established here. The historic overlay district will have minimal impact compared to what's already been established. And again, we've learned from a lot of the things we've done in the past and the processes that we've put in place. I had some notes here, too, that I wanted to try to address if I could with the, as it relates to, again, the installation of sewer as opposed to septic. That was one of the hindrances we had with trying to increase density for people in some of these native areas. Over the past few years, you may be familiar that we've certainly made an effort to get everyone on already be anyway. And as far as what will happen when people increase their density or have more use for their land, whether that will entice some unscrupulous developers or not, again, I echo the sentiments of the chairman, that we don't want to be in the business of telling people exactly what they can do with their property. And I believe that Mr. O'Neill makes references to that as well. We are certainly in favor of preserving the culture and keeping the people here, but we recognize the freedom of people to do what they choose with their property. And as I've said so many times before, these are not something, this is not something new. Developers are already coming in, people are already selling their property, they're still trying to sell their property. I think if we make the properties more attractive, then they'll find ways to do more with the property and stay here, and also how it will be used in those areas that are relevant. I'm all in favor of looking at some of the other areas that may be impacted in a negative way, but it just kind of exposes some of the things that have been happened, that have already happened in the past, and maybe some of the other negative impacts that the LMO has had in the past. That's not what we're suggesting here in this historic overlay district. But as, just as an example, those are the things that we've learned from the LMO in the past. So we don't want to be blamed for what has happened in the past to some other LMO challenges. I think we've done a yeoman's job in trying to get it to this point. Recommendations continue forward. I think that's it for right now, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Levon. Leslie?
Yes, thank you. I have two comments. One is something I meant to mention before, based on the, some of the comments that were in written form, and that is that this is not a workforce housing amendment. There were some, there are some amendments noted in the new zones, just to make them consistent with what is already proposed for workforce housing, but this is not a workforce housing amendment. And the second item is, I 100% agree with Chairman Christian, that developed tracks should be taken out of the district much the way we handle other planned developments throughout Hilton Head on the zoning map. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Mark?
Yes, thank you. I guess I'm a little confused now about what are the implications of taking the previously developed areas out of this overlay? What does it do to the overall proposal? Why is it necessary to be in there?
Who are you speaking to, me?
Well, I don't know. Either you or...
I think Chairman Christian pretty much gave the illustration, if, you know, you're in a developed neighborhood with existing setbacks that were laid out when it was developed, surrounded by homes, similar density and setbacks, and your house is falling down and destroyed, one would assume that you use the setbacks you were originally developed under, but if you stay underneath in this option zone, as the staff said, you would be able to use new setbacks. And I don't think that's the intent of the ordinance.
So I guess I'm saying, why not take it out?
And Mark, you're echoing my concern. If it has no effect on the other properties that are in the hands of native islanders, why create a controversy? Just take it out.
Yeah, I'm with you, unless some reason comes up that says we shouldn't do that.
In my mind, it has no bearing whatsoever on the adjacent properties that are owned by the native islanders.
Right.
Peter, if I can interject one thing real quick, I think it needs to identify the properties that are native islanders.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the inverse of what we're saying.
Yes, exactly. I just want to make that statement.
And then it's easier for, when they come in with an application, you're clearly on the map.
Jennifer Ray, for the record, if I can jump in. Part of the problem with what you're explaining, why it would make it more straightforward for a lot of people, we can't create these rules or this overlay for a specific race, religion, group of people, ethnic, you know, any of those kind of reasons. It has to be something geographic, and so that's why it's been based on the historic neighborhoods, because traditionally, those were the Gullah Geechee property, well, you know, the whole, much of the island, but those were the historic neighborhoods where settlement started and occurred over time. And while some of those have been developed in other ways at this point, that was a way to create some opportunity within the Gullah Geechee community, but also tie it to these historic neighborhoods. So it's not specific to a native islander. What we can do, though, is similar to workforce housing. As Ms. McGowan mentioned, this isn't, you know, the same set of amendments, but in there, we do exclude platted major subdivisions, you know, already established. And so we could do probably a similar language that would exclude those, that makes it more clear and would alleviate the concerns of people in those neighborhoods for what if something happens and how they could be rebuilt. Also, if they had covenants and restrictions already in place, like some of those neighborhoods do, even though they're not, you know, gated communities, they do have covenants and restrictions that would override, just like they do today, what's in the LMO, it could be more restrictive already.
And Jennifer, I get all that, but we don't know what those covenants are in each one of those subdivisions. So there needs to be something put in place that excludes them. And I get that it's an historic district, but we're calling it an historic Gullah Geechee district, and those folks are not on native island property at this point.
Well, technically, we're not calling it a historic Gullah Geechee community or neighborhood, or that's why Teresa's title is not that. It's all tied back to the historic neighborhoods, because we can't tie it to just the Gullah Geechee property owners.
Okay, well, what can be done within the confines of the LMO to eliminate those folks from the new overlay district?
Well, as I mentioned, we can have the same or similar language that we have in workforce housing, because the concern was there, too, that if I already live in a subdivision that someone next door can't just suddenly build more workforce housing in my neighborhood, we can put that language in to exclude those subdivisions from being able to participate in the reduced buffers and setbacks, the density changes, any of those that while they're in the historic neighborhoods, they wouldn't have that benefit.
And I believe that, you know, that should be done, because the folks living in those communities, you know, obviously are very concerned.
Yeah.
And I think we'll, we have had our town attorney review these as drafted, just like the workforce housing amendments. We'll have, we'll talk about that and just make sure that we're not doing anything that's going to create, you know, another problem. But I think that's a good way to move this on to public planning committee is with that as one of planning commission's recommendations, if you, if you will.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Jen, second if you could. I would add to what Ray is saying, and that we have to understand that while we're trying to do something that helps preserve the culture, as she mentioned, we cannot do things for a specific ethnic group. What happens here is that people get included in these areas, because that's where they happen to live. If there is a way to provide some filter that would give them some protection or some consideration, but I just want to make sure that we don't lose the intent of what the historic overlay district is attempting to do. A lot of these communities already have covenants and things in place that will restrict them from taking advantage of this overlay district. And a lot of the open space that we're talking about is already controlled by the town of Hilton Head. And there are those layers already in place for the design review board and the whole application process that folks have to go through for the environmental protections and things like that. So again, I appreciate the concern and the sensitivity for those areas that may be worried about what's going to happen and how their planned neighborhoods are going to be affected. But I also want to be careful that we don't overreach or go into an area where, again, we're trying to read somebody's mind and put some law in that takes away the freedom of what the people in the community want to do.
All right. Thank you, Levon. Mark was up, this was his turn, so I want to make sure that Mark is not cut short. So, Mark?
Well, thank you. I don't feel cut short at all. I'm just still confused about why can't we, what damage does it do to the overall proposal if we exempt those properties? That's all. Levon, I'm strongly supportive of the proposal. Levon, I'm strongly supportive of the proposal overall. I'm just, so, so if this, this barrier is, is removed, that makes it all the stronger. But if it's not, then we just need to make sure we know what the implications are.
Yeah, and I don't see that as affecting some of the more sensitive areas in the native islanders communities. If that's something that we can all digest and live with. And if there's no legal exposure, as Jennifer Ray said.
And then, you know, Levorn, if we're, we're going to, just removing them removes the angst and gets, gets more support, especially from those adjacent property owners. I, I don't see a downside to that.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I always like to have more information and, you know, I encourage staff, as always, to be creative and thorough and think about outside the box. When we get to a point to move along further and better.
And, and I don't, I don't know if it was Alan who made the comment, you know, when we did the LMO rewrite back in the day, we ended up with unintended consequences. And, you know, if we can alleviate some of those unintended consequences right out of the gate, you know, that would be a positive thing as long as it doesn't affect the, the overall objective of, of this task.
Yeah, I agree.
Mark, you still have the floor?
Okay, I'm, I'm finished. The, the environmental thing sounds like it's solved. It's, it's handled by other regulations and I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Michael, you still on the line?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Michael.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Michael.
Okay, sorry. I found out my landscaping crew here cut my, severed my, my, my connection to the world and the internet. I, I said what I was pretty much going to say earlier. I'll just say I'm all for, you know, preservation of the culture. I'm not for loose regulation development. And I do think that this, as we send this to the town council and to the public planning committee, that we're creating some future chaos for the LMO committee of the planning commission. I, I just think there's a lot of loose ends here. But in the interest of, of working with the task force, you know, I, I think we should move this ahead. But that's all I can say.
Thank you, Michael. Stephen? Unmute yourself, Stephen. Stephen, you need to unmute yourself.
Mr. Alfred, it does seem on our end that you are unmuted. Do you want to give it a test? No.
No. Hey, we didn't hear what you said, Stephen. Okay. Okay, Todd, you're up.
I have nothing new to add. I, I am in agreement that I think there should be some type of filtering process that takes out some of these existing neighborhoods that are already developed. So I'm in full support of making that adjustment. That's it.
Thank you, Todd. Mr. Campbell?
I have nothing new to say.
Hey, thank, thank you, John. Well, we've had a very, very thorough discussion. And I, I believe I've, I've heard basically a, a, a agreement among the commissioners that there, something needs to be placed in the document or the recommendation that takes out the existing subdivisions to give them a level of protection and those living in those subdivision a, a comfort level. Because many of the comments that we heard, both written and from our callers, went back to that, that, that concern. I, I wanted to echo the, the comments of all the commissioners and the work of, of the Gola Gichi Task Force and Chairman Stevens. And, and he noted several times, you know, there's not going to be a perfect document. We need to look at it very, very carefully. I think we're all in quasi-agreement that this needs to move on to the next, next phase. But we want to eliminate, if at all possible, any unintended consequences that we can foresee. And I'm sure, as Mike Scanlon pointed out, you know, we, we will find things out in the future and it will be back before the LMO committee to make some adjustments. So at, at this point, the chair will entertain a, a motion to, on this item. Vice Chairman Stevens?
I, I make a motion that we, we approve these recommendations with those revisions that we mentioned that staff can verify for us. But make the motion that we move these recommendations forward.
Are you including in that motion that the existing subdivisions within the overlay district, language be inserted to remove them from the, the provisions of the, of the historic district?
Per discovery of the staff's findings, yes.
Can I, can I ask a question real quick? That for the purpose of the, our viewers out there, let them know exactly what we are voting on?
Would you like for Dr. DeBose to repeat the recommendations that have been brought forward?
I just, I just want to make sure that, that they're, you know, because they may not have all the information that we have at our fingertips, just so that they know that, you know, are we voting on the overlay district? And that's what we're voting on?
Okay, I'll take another stab at it.
Okay.
I recommend that we approve the recommendations for the historic overlay district with revisions of removing established subdivisions and already planned communities per the findings of the staff.
And answer your question, Alan?
Yeah, I just hope that answers everybody else's question. Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to Vice Chairman Stevens' motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Todd. All right. Teresa, if you would call the roll, if you're in favor of the motion, say aye or yes. And if you're not, say nay or no. If you have an additional comment, as we go through, that would be the time to provide that additional comment. So Teresa, if you would please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
I will approve the recommendation to move the overlay district forward as requested amendments made in the proposal.
Mr. Stevens?
I will also approve moving the recommendations forward. And my comments are such that, again, there are some things that are, no, that are not perfect. And there's some other items that we had worked on with our task force, such as the rounding up issues and the holding for two or three years for folks to decide them. But I will remove, I, I will approve moving these recommendations forward, understanding that this is a living document and we will continue to improve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neill?
Aye.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Mr. Christian?
Approve. And I want to thank all the commissioners, especially Levorn and Todd, who were on the task force and Leslie and members of the LMO committee who wrestled with this very, very important issue. It's been said that it is, it is not perfect and it will be modified, I am sure, as it goes down the road. But the, the overall value of this is to keep the Gola Gichi culture alive on Hilton Head Island and also benefit those native islanders so that they can profit from their land and hopefully stay on their land because of that profitability. We move on, and before we do, it is 11:45. I would ask the commissioners if they would be up for a 15-minute break and where we would reassemble at noon and so that we can get a drink of water or just take care of any other business that we may need to take care of. So could I have a motion that, that we temporarily, what's the right word, Teresa? It isn't, we're not adjourning the, the meeting, but we are...
Mr. Chairman, recess.
We are recessing until noon. Is there a motion that we recess until noon?
Take that motion.
Is there a second? Levorn, second. All in favor? Aye. All right, we'll be back right here at 10:00, folks.
All right, I'm back.
I thought you were talking to someone.
Okay.
You'll also be on Facebook video, too, just so you know.
Mr. Chairman, I see that we have eight members on video, and I do see that Mr. Scamlin is on the line on phone. So whenever you are ready, staff is ready to call the meeting back to order.
Okay. Could I have a motion that we come out of recess and continue our meeting?
Motion to motion.
Okay, I have Alan and Mark. I saw your hand first. So Alan Perry moved, Mark seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I take that as unanimous. All right, we are back in session. We have a public hearing on ZA 001783-2020, a request from the town of Hilton Head Island to amend the official zoning map by applying the historic preservation overlay district to the identified parcels. The LMO amendments associated with HNP-0 district will allow the development of historic overlay that includes flexibility to buffer setbacks and access, increase in height, impervious cover, and adds family compound and family subdivision as new applications. And it has a list of the affected parcels, and I am not going to read every affected parcel, which will take most of the afternoon. But by reference, I will ask Theresa to incorporate those into the minutes. And we do have a presentation at this time from Missy Luick, our senior planner. Is Missy on the line?
I am.
Thank you, Missy.
I am going to share my screen. Can you see my screen now?
Can.
You can see the screen?
Yes.
Affirmative.
Okay. My name's Missy Luick, and I'm a senior planner for the record, and I'm presenting on the Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Overlay District, which I'm going to refer to as the HNPO district throughout this presentation. So this is a request from the town of Hilton Head to amend the official zoning map that would apply to the Historic Neighborhoods Preservation Overlay District, all the parcels within the historic neighborhoods that are proposed on this map that Dr. DeBose has already shared with you. The affected parcels are identified here, and Dr. DeBose has also explained that these properties have varying zoning districts that are existing. All of those zoning districts that were previously explained would remain, and this is an overlay district that's applied to those parcels. Some of these parcels also have existing overlay districts that currently apply, such as the corridor overlay district, the airport overlay district, and the planned development overlay, the PD2 district. Those overlays would still apply. So if there was a property that's currently zoned RM8, it would remain RM8, and then the HNPO district overlay would apply, as well as any other existing overlays that currently apply, would apply to that particular parcel. And included in staff report documents was the parcel list for all the parcels that are included within this overlay. As Dr. DeBose has explained, that the historic districts are identified on this map, and the proposed HNPO district area that was on my previous slide was created to mirror the portions of Hilton Head Island's historic neighborhoods. So this amendment proposed includes... It applies to the properties within the overlay, and it includes changes to development regulations as well as new activities such as a family compound and family subdivision. Again, the request also includes some changes that my colleague Tyler Newman will discuss in the next proposed amendment, which changes the RM4 properties to propose to a new district RM6, would also be included within this overlay. There are some changes, again, already identified by Dr. DeBose that change some of the regulations in the Marshfront District, which changes the density along major arterios from four dwelling units per acre to six dwelling units per acre. And this is a document that was included as the attachments. This is a summary document that summarizes the various amendments that, again, Dr. DeBose has already gone over. But it's detailed in Attachment B that was included with the staff report for this amendment. And it goes through the changes of what's currently allowed in the LMO for setbacks, buffers, impervious cover, building height, access, uses, density, and what the application review requirements are proposed to become. And as Dr. DeBose has also gone through some of these examples of what the current regulations require, and then what the changes would be to a development that is within the HNPO overlay district. In this particular example, there's a development, and it shows the differences in the setbacks from the street, the adjacent street setback, and then the various adjacent uses, and what that could look like, as an example. He also already shared the example of a family compound and what that may look like on a particular parcel that's in the HNPO overlay district. And finally, here's another example of a regular subdivision as opposed to a family subdivision. And you can see with the two examples here for a regular subdivision, the access would require to be built prior to the plat being approved, as well as all the infrastructure. In the family subdivision, the infrastructure and access is to the point of development. And they also have differences in the actual right-of-way that's required as part of that access. If I'm going too fast, you can ask me to slow down. But I think Dr. DeBose has already covered this. So the town is the applicant for this amendment, and the grounds for the amendment are to implement recommendations from the Gullah Geechee Culture Preservation Project Report. The proposed HNPO district aims to both preserve historic neighborhood properties and provide economic opportunities for landowners within the HNPO district. The proposed rezoning will allow all of the existing uses that are currently allowed in each zoning district plus additional activities, as well as modifications in the development regulations. Again, the proposed HNPO district mirrors portions of Hilton Head Island's historic neighborhoods. Now I'm going to go through the nine criteria that are part of the zoning amendment. Criteria one, whether to and the extent to which the proposed zoning is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. DAF finds that this criteria is met as the proposed overlay district is in accordance with the comprehensive plan as described in the cultural resources, population, housing, and land use elements. By allowing more flexibility in how property can be used, the proposed overlay district will preserve the historic character of Gullah-owned lands and neighborhoods consistent with the cultural resources element and the implementation strategy. The proposed overlay district will allow family compounds and family subdivisions consistent with the housing element implementation strategy. And by increasing density and allowing flexibility in development standards, the proposed overlay district will increase the development potential of Gullah properties consistent with the population element goal and land use element goals. Criteria two, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning would allow a range of uses that are compatible with the uses allowed on other property in the immediate vicinity. DAF finds this criteria is met as the rezoning does not change the base zoning of any property and will allow all of the existing uses that are currently allowed in each zoning district, and therefore is compatible with uses in the immediate vicinity. Rezoning will allow new activities for properties included within the HNPO district, including family compound and family subdivision, which create opportunities to pass land to future generations. These activities are residential uses and are similar to small residential developments and minor subdivisions, which are activities that are currently allowed in the existing zoning districts that are within the HNPO district, and also therefore compatible with uses in the immediate vicinity. Criteria number three, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning is appropriate for the land. DAF finds that this criteria is met as the rezoning does not change the base zoning of any property and will allow all of the existing uses that are currently allowed in each zoning district. The rezoning will allow new activities for properties within the HNPO district, including the family compound and family subdivision, which, again, are similar to residential activities, including the small residential developments and minor subdivisions. The proposed zoning is appropriate for the land because it allows for both land preservation opportunities as well as land development opportunities for properties within the HNPO district. Criteria number four, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning addresses a demonstrated community need. DAF finds this criteria is met. The rezoning would fulfill a demonstrated community need because the proposed rezoning addresses community needs as identified in the Gullah Geechee Culture Preservation Project Report, in which two main goals were identified, one, to provide opportunities to preserve land, and two, to make it easier to develop property. The report further specifies that an overlay district for historical neighborhoods on Hilton Head Island be created to serve as the vehicle of many of the report's recommendations. Criteria number five, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning is consistent with the overall zoning program as expressed in future plans for the town. DAF finds this criteria is met as the proposed zoning is consistent with the overall zoning program as expressed in future plans for the town. The town of Hilton Head Island Town Council identified the preservation of Gullah Geechee culture as a top priority initiative, and the proposed family subdivision and family compound activities help to preserve Gullah lands which are impacted by the proposed rezoning. Criteria number six, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning would avoid creating an inappropriately isolated zoning district unrelated to adjacent and surrounding zoning districts. DAF finds this criteria is met as the proposed zoning would avoid creating an inappropriately isolated zoning district unrelated to adjacent and surrounding zoning districts because all of the existing uses that are currently allowed in each zoning district would still be allowed. The rezoning offers new family compound and family subdivision activities that are similar to activities currently allowed in the existing zoning districts. Therefore, the proposed rezoning does not create any inappropriately isolated activities. Criteria number seven, whether and the extent to which... to which the proposed zoning would allow the subject property to be put to a reasonably viable economic use. Staff finds this criteria is met as the proposed zoning would allow subject properties to be put to a reasonably viable economic use because the rezoning does not change the base zoning of any property and will allow all of the existing uses that are currently allowed in each zoning district. The H-NPO district rezoning introduces new activities, the family subdivision and family compound, which are additional development activities aimed at achieving both family, land preservation, and family land development goals. And the rezoning offers opportunities related to land development and will allow modifications to development regulations that will increase the economic viability of the properties within the H-NPO district. Criteria number eight, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning would result in development that can be served by available, adequate, and suitable public facilities, example, streets, potable water, sewage, stormwater management. Staff finds this criteria is met as in general, the properties within the H-NPO district already have access to adequate infrastructure and public facilities servicing existing developments. The Hilton Head Public Service District Sewer Master Plan has extended sewer service to previously underserved areas throughout Hilton Head. Hilton Head Island has access to water and sewer through the public service districts. Electrical services are available to service sites throughout Hilton Head Island. The town has a dirt road paving program in the capital improvement program. And any infrastructure or public facility improvements required for new land development would be required to be installed during the development process. So the proposed zoning would result in development that can be, and in some cases, is already served by available public facilities. Criteria number nine, is appropriate due to any changed or changing conditions in the affected area? Staff finds this criteria is met as following extensive land acquisition by non-Gullah people and the construction of a bridge accessing the island in 1956, there's been a steady trend that's occurred that deteriorates Gullah culture. Because of the alarming decrease in the Gullah Geechee percentage of the population and the corresponding loss of Gullah Geechee culture, the town established the Gullah Geechee Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force in 2017. The proposed rezoning is appropriate due to the changing conditions in the affected areas within the proposed H-NPO district. Finally, since staff finds that all nine criteria are met with this application, staff recommends approval of the application. These would be some of the next steps that would come. Processed. That concludes my presentation.
Missy, two questions before we open this up. The first criteria was, was it compatible with the comprehensive plan? I'm assuming that we're working off the old comprehensive plan for that criteria?
We're operating under the current comprehensive plan that is adopted.
Was there any thought to looking at? I know the new comprehensive plan, which is part of the visioning process, is under consideration presently by the town council. I think it's going for a second reading at looking and see if it would be compatible with that comprehensive plan.
I'll defer to the staff that's in the conference room.
Yes, the, this would be, the current comprehensive plan would be taken into consideration when trying to, when aligning those two together.
Okay, was there any thought of looking at the one under consideration to see if it would align with the comprehensive plan that it will most likely come under?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. All right. We're going to go through a discussion order. I believe there are no public comments. Teresa, am I correct with that assumption?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And, and Missy, one more question. Did this go to the LMO committee? Did they take a look at this particular one?
I believe they were all included. Yes.
Correct, Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, Teresa. Generally, rezoning applications do not go to the LMO committee. They go straight to Planning Commission.
But the mapping, the mapping was considered.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. And you're first up, Leslie, so please provide any comments or questions.
I have no comments at this time.
Thank you, Leslie. Todd?
I don't either.
Michael, I assume you're still on the line? Mike Scanlon?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, well, you hear me very briefly because I don't have any further comments.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Mark?
No comments.
Stephen?
No comment.
Levon?
I meant that this presentation is...
I think we lost Levon. We'll give him a minute to get back. John Campbell?
No comment. No comment.
All right, and the comment that I have, do we need to treat this the same way as we treated the overlay district to recommend that we eliminate those properties or put something in the amendment that eliminates those properties that are already developed? So this would, they would, these provisions would not be affecting those properties? And that's a question for Missy or the staff in the conference room?
Well, this amendment does apply the overlay district to the particular parcels. And so all of the parcels that were included in the map that's in your packet are included in this proposed zoning map amendment.
I guess my, my next question is, what will, what, how will that affect the parcels that are already been developed much the same way as we had the discussion at the previous item?
The same answers that were provided still apply in many cases, as was explained. Those existing developments have private covenants that, that we are not aware of at this point, but many of them require them to probably retain the development standards that they were developed under. But they're private covenant.
Okay, well, and we don't know that for a fact. And, you know, as we previously pointed out, we need to have something in there that is going to exclude those, those properties. So can that also be done so we're consistent down the line with our recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, you can make your motion the same way you did for when you were deciding on the overlay district.
Okay, just, just want to make sure that we're consistent all the way down the line. Okay, any, we'll do a second round. And after that, we'll, we'll call for, for a motion. Alan, anything additional?
No, not at this time.
All right, Levon, we missed you for a minute.
I'm experiencing some internet connection problems here.
You, you need to talk to Mike Scanlon about that. All right, you're, you're... You, you have any comments on this particular item on our agenda at this point?
I made some comments earlier. I don't know if they were heard or not because I lost the connection.
We, we did not hear anything you said, Levon, so feel free.
Well, hopefully I don't get cut off again here. It's kind of intermittent. But what I said was that hopefully these definitions and explanations will also be relevant to our previous discussion and alleviate some of the concerns and anxieties.
Goodbye.
We lost him again. There he is.
I'm very sorry. Can you hear me now?
You can.
I'll reserve my comments for later. I mean, I'm...
Mr. Chairman, if I can jump in, this is Jennifer Ray. Just to clarify, based on the question about the condition or the recommendation that y'all made on the previous item that Sharice had, the idea is not to change what's in the overlay so the map wouldn't change, but to add the language that says that those already platted subdivisions would not take advantage of them. So I don't think it'll actually affect this item, the rezoning that Missy has, because it's still the same historic neighborhoods. The map stays the same. If that, if that makes sense. So then if we find out that we can't just add that language and we have to change the map, then it would apply to this. But right now, staff believes that we can just exclude through the text in the text amendment rather than changing the actual map.
Okay, so you believe that the first item should take care of all the subsequent items and we're not going to get caught in two, two different statements in the LMO?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Leslie, any additional comments?
No, without clarification, I have no further comments.
Okay, Mark?
No comments.
Michael, you still on the line?
I hope so. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. You sound like a Verizon commercial.
Oh, man, I'll tell you. I feel like the governor of Michigan. Somebody's, I'm under attack. No, I have no further points to add at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Michael. Stephen?
Nothing further.
Thank you, Stephen. Todd?
No additional comments.
Mr. Campbell?
No additional comments.
Thank you, John. And I have no additional comments as long as we are of the understanding that the exclusion of those already developed parcels will not be affected by this particular amendment. So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to move this item forward.
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll give that one to Michael and we'll, we'll give Levon the second. All right, so Mike Scanlon moved it. Levon seconded. And Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Perry?
Approved.
Mr. Stevens?
Approved.
Ms. McGowan?
Approved.
Mr. O'Neil?
Approved.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approved.
Mr. Alfred?
Approved.
Mr. Theodore?
Approved.
Mr. Campbell?
Approved.
Mr. Christian?
Approved. All right, and next we have, thank you for that. We have a public hearing on zoning amendment request from the town of Hilton Head Island to amend the official zoning map for RM4 properties within the proposed historic neighborhoods preservation overlay HNP-0 and district to be rezoned to RM6. And there is a list of affected properties, which, again, I am not going to read, but I will ask Teresa to incorporate into the minutes by reference. And we're going to have Tyler Newman, the senior planner, make a presentation.
Tyler Newman, senior planner, for the record. All righty, so this is ZA 001782-2020.
All right, Tyler, we're not seeing anything up on our computers. At least I'm not.
We're working on getting that pulled up right now.
Okay, thank you.
There we go.
Thank you.
All righty, a request from the town of Hilton Head Island to amend the official zoning map for properties that are currently zoned low to moderate density residential, or RM4, and located in the proposed historic neighborhood preservation overlay, the H-NPO district to be rezoned to moderate density residential RM6. So this image shows in blue all of the parcels that are being impacted by the rezoning request. The purple you guys have seen earlier, this is the H-NPO district as a whole. This graphic illustrates a 1.5-acre parcel. On the left, you'll see the potential, the development potential in the RM4 zoning district. At 1.5 acres, you could put up to six dwelling units on the parcel in RM4. With it being RM6, there are eight shown in the illustration. It could actually support up to nine as long as it met all of the development standards. And so now we're going to go ahead and just jump right into the criteria. Or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, skip ahead there. The, yeah. The applicant's grounds for ZMA include that the RM4 zoning district is the most prevalent within the Gullah neighborhoods. The applicant recommends an increase from four dwelling units per net acre to six dwelling units per net acre, eight if the lot is at least five acres. And the applicant states that the increase in allowable density will provide greater options for existing Gullah lands. Criteria number one, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Staff finds that the proposed zoning or rezoning is in accordance with the comprehensive plan as described in the population and land use elements as set forth in the LMO. By increasing the density on the subject properties, the proposed rezoning will increase the development potential of government or Gullah properties consistent with population element goal 4.2-A and land use element goals 8.4-A, 8.5-A, and 8.10-A. Criteria number two, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning would allow a range of uses that are compatible with the uses allowed on other properties in the immediate vicinity. All of the uses that are currently allowed in the RM4 zoning district will carry over and be permitted within the RM6 zoning district. The proposed rezoning will allow new activities, including the previously mentioned family compound, family subdivision, and workforce housing, which are moderate-density activities and are compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff concludes that the proposed rezoning will allow uses that are compatible with the uses allowed on other property in the immediate vicinity in accordance with the appropriate LMO section. Criteria number three, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning is appropriate for the land. As previously stated, all of the, all of the uses that are currently allowed on, in RM4 will carry over to RM6. The application proposes an increase in density from four dwelling units... The application proposes an increase in density from four dwelling units to six dwelling units, as recommended by the report done by the Walker Collaborative, to allow an increase in the development potential for Gullah lands. The addition of family compound, family subdivision activities are also low to moderate density activities, which would fit into the surrounding area, or is appropriate for the land as well. The proposed zoning is appropriate for the land because the increase in density and proposed activities are compatible with the surrounding uses. Criteria number four, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning addresses a demonstrated community need. Town Council has identified the preservation of Gullah Geechee culture as a top priority initiative. Additionally, the Walker Collaborative recommended an increase in density for RM4 properties based on input from stakeholders in the native islander community. The proposed family subdivision and family compound activities help to preserve Gullah lands, which are impacted by the rezoning by allowing land to be shared and passed down to future generations. Additionally, the proposed rezoning balances the desire to provide greater options for Gullah lands with sound planning principles and likely future market demand by allowing land to be shared and passed down to future generations, as well as increasing the development potential of Gullah properties. The proposed zoning will provide residents in the impacted communities more flexibility and development potential for their properties. Criteria number five, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning is consistent with the overall zoning program as expressed in future plans for the town. As previously stated, Town Council identified the preservation of Gullah Geechee culture as a top priority initiative. Staff concludes that the proposed zoning is consistent with the overall zoning program as expressed in future plans for the town, because it provides appropriate modifications to the zoning designations to meet market demands while maintaining the character of the island. Criteria number six, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning would avoid creating an inappropriately isolated zoning district unrelated to adjacent and surrounding districts. The RM4 zone properties currently exist adjacent to the same surrounding zoning districts as they will with the proposed rezoning to RM6. The staff concludes that the proposed zoning will avoid creating an inappropriately isolated zoning district unrelated to adjacent and surrounding zoning districts, because the rezoning will result in a zoning district that is compatible with the existing surrounding uses and densities. Criteria number seven, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning would allow the subject properties be put to a reasonably viable economic use. All, as I previously stated, the proposed rezoning keeps all the current uses that exist in RM, in the RM4 zoning district, and would allow the additional family compound and family subdivision activities, as well as the workforce housing use. The proposed increase density from four dwelling units per net acre to six dwelling units per net acre will increase the economic viability of the impacted properties. Staff concludes that the proposed zoning would allow the subject property to be put to a reasonably viable economic use, because an increase in density allows landowners more development potential. Criteria number eight, whether and the extent to which the proposed zoning would result in development that can be served by available, adequate, and suitable public facilities. All of the existing allowable uses in the RM4 zoning district will carry over to RM6. The additional activities that are included, family compound, family subdivision, and workforce housing, have essentially the same public facilities requirements as residential uses such as group living, multifamily, and single family, which already exist in the RM4 zoning district. Additionally, it should be noted that should any of the impacted property owners wish to develop their properties in the future, development plan review or subdivision application will be required. Any infrastructure or public facilities improvements needed for any proposed development would be required at that time. Staff concludes that the proposed zoning would result in development that can, and in some cases is already served by available public facilities. Criteria number nine, is appropriate due to any change or changing conditions in the affected area. Staff finds that following an extensive land acquisition by non-Gullah people and the construction of a bridge accessing the island in 1956, the steady trend has occurred that deteriorates the Gullah culture on the island. Because of the alarming decrease in the Gullah Geechee percentage of the population and the corresponding loss of the Gullah Geechee culture, the town established the Gullah Geechee Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force in 2017 to help identify ways to preserve Gullah land. As previously mentioned, one of Town Council's goals is to determine how to preserve and develop native islander properties that are impacted by these changing conditions. And that the Walker Collaborative recommended an increase in density for RM4 properties based on the input from stakeholders in the native islander community. Based on these findings, staff concludes that allowing higher density for the RM4 zoning district in the proposed historic Gullah neighborhoods Conservation Overlay District allows landowners to better leverage their potential land value. So based off from these findings of fact and conclusions of law, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the application contained in the staff report. And as Missy noted in her presentation, the next steps would be first reading at Town Council on November 4th, and the second reading on November 17th. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Tyler.
Yes, sir.
I understand we have no public comments, Teresa, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will go through the commissioners, and if you have a question or a comment of staff, or just a general comment to share with the commissioners, your fellow commissioners. Leslie, you're first up.
Thank you, I have no questions or comments.
Todd?
I guess the question goes back to staff again, is this under the same situation as what we previously reviewed in terms of existing subdivisions?
Yes.
No other questions?
Mike Scanlon?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark.
No questions.
Alan?
No questions.
Stephen?
No questions.
Levon?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Campbell?
No questions at this time.
All right, Tyler, you had mentioned that it would go from four units per acre to six units per acre. But if the parcel was five acres, it would go to eight units per acre, and so it would double the density. Do we know how many parcels are out there that it's five acres or more?
I don't have that information on hand.
You know, given the fact that you're going to be doubling the density?
It should be noted that that's already the case in the RM4 zoning district. If, if a property was five acres or more in the RM4 zoning district as it currently exists, they would still have the right to go up to eight dwelling units per net acre.
Okay, so, and my, my follow-up was, question was going to be, is, you mentioned about, you know, water and sewer and those types of, I was going to ask the question about roadway infrastructure and impact on school, but since that's already part of the, of the LMO and allowed in that district, we're not changing anything, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I do have a question, Peter.
Go ahead, Alan.
Earlier when we voted on the, on the first one, the questions came up, and we were talking about setbacks and buffers, and setbacks between existing neighborhoods and proposed compounds or residential areas. Will those comments that we made be addressed going forward? Or should we, or would I be able to make some kind of a comment here that, that that some of the changes from, within RM6 be looked at?
That's an engineer you could use, though.
Pardon?
Oh, sorry.
Because I, I don't, because I, you know, I've been looking over some stuff and, and you know, the setbacks between properties, you know, existing is 20 feet and then five feet or zero feet for the proposed. And if I'm incorrect on that, please correct me, and this is a lot of information to decipher. But I see that as a disservice to, you know, some areas, and I don't think it's being addressed going forward. Am I stumped you?
So, that wouldn't be addressed at this point, that, that would have been addressed during Teresa's.
Then my, my question is, is that, well, okay, understood.
Well, Alan, you, you were first up for the second round of comments, Levon, questions? Concerns?
No comments at this time.
Leslie?
No comments.
Mark?
No comments.
Mike Scanlon?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael. Stephen?
No comments.
Todd Theodore?
No comments.
And John Campbell?
No comments. No comments.
Thank you, John. All right, I, I have no additional comments, again, the overarching item, we're making a lot of adjustments here, and I'm sure that down the road, you know, we will be coming back and tweaking some things that we, we missed, because inevitably we will, we will miss something. All right, at this time, I'd like to take in a motion to move this particular amendment forward. Does someone like to make that motion?
Don't move.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
I've got Michael and I've got, I've got Mark O'Neil making the motion and Mike Scanlon seconding. Teresa, if you would call the roll and please indicate your, your yay or nay.
Mr. Perry?
Approved.
Mr. Stevens?
Approved.
Ms. McGowan?
Approved.
Mr. O'Neil?
Approved.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approved.
Mr. Alfred?
Approved.
Mr. Theodore?
Approved.
Mr. Campbell?
Approved.
Mr. Christian?
Approved. Well, thank you all. My chairman's remarks are up next, and my remarks on you, you ladies and gentlemen have done a unbelievable job of digesting a mountain of information and almost 100 pages of public comments, and been with us now for going on three hours. And, you know, my hat's off to each and every one of you for your, your diligence and your public service. And we'll move it on to committee reports, CIP, Todd, any report?
Nothing at this time.
Comp plan, Michael?
Our, our plan is in the hands of the Town Council, and I'm very happy about that.
Amen. Levon, Gullah Geechee Task Force?
I would just echo the sentiments expressed here today. I appreciate the thoughtful consideration and all the questions of concern and the support of my colleagues on the Planning Commission. And we are all to be commended for making some forward progress, as counting as it may be sometimes. I appreciate the support with the Gullah Geechee Task Force in moving those recommendations forward. I believe that some of our concerns, I was trying to say before when I got cut off of my connection, I believe that some of our concerns will be alleviated when we have a better understanding of what the staff finds and some of the things that are already in place through some of the other filters, and even some of the other overlay districts and zoning regulations that are already in place as they affect established subdivisions and neighborhoods. So again, thank you all for your support.
Okay, thank you, Levon, for your hard work of the Gullah Geechee Task Force and all the members of the, of that task force. LMO Committee, Leslie?
Well, well, you know what we've been working on. I do want to shout out just to, well, the staff has been wonderful and, and informative, but the, just the staggering getting 3,000 letters out to ensure that this, this is a transparent process is really, is very commendable. I'm not, we, we don't have an upcoming meeting scheduled, but I'm sure we will shortly. Still plenty of fun things out there to sink our teeth into.
And Leslie, if I, if I may note, we've had an open seat on the LMO Committee, and I've asked our newest member, John Campbell, to join your committee. So, we will add him to
That's great.
The workforce of the, of the mighty LMO Committee.
Great, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, rules and procedures, anything, Alan?
Nothing to report.
Staff report, Anne, do you have a quarterly report for us?
Mr. Chairman, if we could go back to commission business and look at the 2020 meeting schedule, or sorry, 2021 meeting schedule under item 10A?
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, do we have that in our voluminous packet somewhere?
Yes, sir.
It's in the back of something.
One of the last pages.
It looks like this on the back, Theodore.
Found it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pulling it up on the screen now.
Thank, thank you so much.
Sure.
So this will be our meeting schedule for 2021, or proposed meeting schedule for 2021?
Proposed, of course, the commission is welcome to provide any comments, changes.
Well, we appreciate you giving us off for Christmas. Anyone have any comments on the proposed calendar?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Levon.
I don't know how much we know right now, but do we have any information about when we will be able to go into having physical meetings as opposed to virtual? As I can, to have, as I continue to have internet issues, and perhaps we could add infrastructure to one of our agendas.
Does the staff have any insight into that phenomenon?
So, staff is working on getting us back into Town Hall, having meetings in person at the, in the new year, but we won't know for sure until closer to that time.
Okay, so we may, we may have a January 4th meeting face to face, and then the key word is May.
Correct, it would be January 6th would be the first date that we're targeting.
I'm looking at the application date, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, do we need to approve this? Okay, do we need to approve this, Teresa?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, and knowing that we'll probably make some changes to it once we get into the new year?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, I got Stephen with the second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. It passes unanimously. Okay, Anne, back to you.
Yes, you have your quarterly report that covers the first several months of the year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Anne, I just wanted to note your upcoming meetings. There's a reminder, there is a special meeting next week, Wednesday, October twenty-first, two o'clock, to review town council's changes related to workforce housing. The regular meeting on November fourth is canceled due to both the lack of agenda items and scheduling conflicts due to election day, town council's meeting had to be moved to that, to November four. There is no special meeting on November nine, and then the next regular meeting would be November eighteenth at three o'clock.
And I do have a question on the, on the workforce housing issue, and we moved that up to the town council, and they accepted part of it, and they sent back part of it. Could you put a little bit more flesh on the bones? And obviously, we're not going to discuss it now, but just want to be clear about what exactly the town is asking us to do, the town council.
Mr. Christian, this is Jennifer Ray. What they asked us to do was to move forward the portion of workforce housing related to commercial conversion, and not the portion related to bonus density. And so that will come back to you just for review and recommendation per state code, if council takes a different action than what the planning commission had, and then it will go back to town council for second reading in November.
Okay, and we can discuss that in more detail when we have it before us at our next meeting?
Next week, yes, sir.
All right, do we have any further business to come before the commission? I wanted to thank everyone. It was a very long meeting with a lot of points to be made. Appreciate everyone's attention, cooperation, thoughtful comments, and thoughtful questions. And want to welcome John Campbell to, into the fold. We welcome you, John. Look forward to your contributions. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alan's got it. Leslie's second. We are adjourned. Thank you all, and thank you staff for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Welcome.